Quiet, please. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City High Red Herring on the Committee on Civil Service and Labor. Please silent all electronic devices at this time. Also, please do not approach the dais. If you have any questions, please raise your hand and one of us is Sergeant at Arms would kindly assist you. Thank you very much for your kind cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to today's legislative hearing of the Civil Service and Labor Committee. I am Carmen Delarosa, Chair of the Committee. Today, we will be hearing the following legislative items. Intro 910, sponsored by myself, in relation to the establishment of a community hiring and compensation standards for city-assisted housing development projects. And Resolution 522, sponsored by Councilmember Menon, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign A10225-S9376, also known as the Good Jobs Guarantee Act, which would establish certain workforce training programs and increase employment opportunities for New Yorkers. I am proud to lead today's hearing on Intro 910, a bill that tackles two pressing issues in New York City: wage disparities in housing construction industry and equitable hiring practices to ensure that economic development projects directly benefit the communities they serve. Intro 910 is a step forward in addressing longstanding inequities in an industry where non-union labor, particularly in affordable housing construction, earns significantly less than their unionized counterparts. These workers are often paid low wages, receive minimal benefits, and face unsafe working conditions, even while building the very homes that are meant to support our city's most low-income residents. These practices not only endanger workers' well-being but also compromise the quality of construction on publicly funded projects. Some non-union contractors evade payroll taxes and fail to provide workers with the essential protections such as social insurance, shifting the economic burden on taxpayers, and low-abiding employers. These hidden costs are felt throughout the economy, even though they aren't reflected in the price of the contract. In addition to addressing wage disparities, Intro 910 includes critical equitable hiring provisions aimed at creating jobs for residents of low-income SIP codes and NITRA developments. By prioritizing local hiring, we not only help individuals secure stable employment but also stimulate economic growth within these communities. It is essential that the public dollars we invest in these projects translate into tangible opportunities for residents who need them most. Today's hearing is about striking a balance, making sure we are building the housing that New Yorkers need while also safeguarding the rights and dignity of workers that make it possible. I look forward to hearing from our witnesses today as we continue to explore how Intro 910 can uplift New York City's workers and create a brighter future for all of the residents by investing in worker dignity, safety, and fair wages. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the staff for their hard work in preparing for this hearing. Senior Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, Legislative Council Rhea Yasawara. I'd also like to thank my Chief of Staff James Burke, Legislative Director Kiana Diaz, and Comms Director Freya Familia. I would like to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Moya and Kaban on Zoom, Councilmember Botcher, Councilmember Wrestler, Councilmember Felice on Zoom, and Councilmember Salam. I also want to recognize that the Young Women's Leadership of the Bronx is visiting us today and they're up in the orchestra. Hi, thank you. Thank you for being here. We can clap for them. Okay, we're also going to be hearing from Councilmember Menon, who is going to have a statement on her resolution when she arrives. And we will hear testimony from representatives of the administration. I now turn to the Committee Council, who will swear in the administration's representative. And I want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Dinowitz as well.
We'll now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand. And anyone who is here, who is present from HPD who's going to testify or answer questions, please join. I will read the affirmation once and then call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do. Thank you.
Thank you. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Chair Delarosa, and members of the New York City Committee on Civil Service and Labor and members of the Committee on Consumer and Worker Protection. My name is Ahmed Tagani, HPD's First Deputy Commissioner and Chief Diversity Officer. I'm also joined by Lucy Joffe, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Strategy. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about Intro 910. HPD expands opportunities for New Yorkers when we are building housing and creating accessible, affordable housing that creates stability for individuals and families that deserve that stability. We are also creating good jobs with fair wages and investing in the city's workforce. We take that economic development function seriously. The administration successfully negotiated for higher wages for workers on new housing built with the 485X tax incentive last spring. We are proud of that commitment and that mixed-income housing created as a result of the 485X program will create many more good-paying jobs. But our primary focus is on building and preserving accessible, affordable housing for New Yorkers who so desperately need it. Increasing wages come at a price that can require difficult trade-offs to that mission. Affordable housing has historically been treated differently because of the widespread recognition of how desperately we need to build and preserve as many affordable houses as we possibly can. If we are going to introduce new wage requirements for affordable housing, we must do so carefully and consider the impacts of this bill on our mission to address New York City's ongoing affordability crisis by building, preserving, and maintaining affordable housing. Based on our initial analysis, this legislation can cost more than $500 million per year to maintain similar production levels currently. As production targets increase, those numbers compound and the cost balloon. New wage requirements of this kind result in higher costs for HPD in the form of: One, increased wages for workers. Two, increased administrative and enforcement costs. Three, higher insurance. Four, higher-per-project low-income housing tax credit needs, otherwise known as LIHTC, which is a limited federal source, meaning that fewer projects can be built with this critical funding source. And because HPD is a gap financer, meaning we cover the gap in project costs between what can be supported by the project's income and the total cost of the project, these costs do not get passed on to the developers. Increases in project costs are funded from HPD's capital budget. The increased costs associated with these new requirements would force us to make some very difficult choices, potentially significantly reducing the number of affordable homes we can provide or build, or we would have to build fewer deeply affordable rental units or fewer homeownership units, because these are the two most expensive types of housing we build. Increased costs at this level threaten the progress we've made on greening our pipeline and building in limited affordability areas, sorry, and building in our limited affordability areas to advance our fair housing goals. New wage requirements can be the difference between some projects being financially feasible versus infeasible. They may discourage would-be developers and owners from participating in our subsidized project programs, limiting our pool of experienced partners, and preventing new and smaller developers, general contractors, and subcontractors from entering the field, such as and including nonprofits and MWBE enterprises. Wage requirements will force us to make difficult trade-offs in a constrained capital resource environment as we fight an affordability crisis. HPD remains committed to the economic development role that our work plays in our city. In addition to the new wage requirements for 485X, we strive to support our city's workforce in a number of ways. We have built our Housing Career Pathways Program with NITRA, with BWI, with Enterprise to create a groundbreaking, scalable program that connects low-income New Yorkers to job opportunities in the housing sector. Just this year, we hit our milestone goal of employing our 100th graduate from that program. HPD's support and investment in the city's workforce also extends beyond construction jobs. Through HPD financed projects, we support community engagement experts, relocation specialists, consultants of other types, and many other critical trades that are a key part of the industry and the work we do every day to support New Yorkers. We look forward to working with the city council to find ways to support construction workers and community hiring while maintaining our capacity to address the critical need for affordable housing. We believe that with thoughtful collaboration, we can find a solution that supports workers and communities and our critical affordable housing goals. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about this important issue, and we look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Deputy Commissioner and to the HPD staff for being here. I have a few questions that I'll jump right into, and then I'm sure we'll have some questions from our colleagues. What role does HPD play in the approval or procurement during the early stages of housing development site planning process?
So, when it comes to site planning process for public sites, we are often involved, obviously, through the selection of a destiny for that site. They come in with a proposal to develop a project in line with community conversations, usually program plans that have to do with the affordability levels on that project, the kind of non-housing or residential uses, community needs, programming, healthcare, et cetera. There's also an emphasis put on their ability to do a strong job recruitment program focused on community hiring and local sourcing of roles on that project related to construction and other related jobs. On private sites, we are also working with the developers who come to use our term sheets. In fact, there are many rules and requirements, especially for projects that are already used, that end up using more than $2 million in public subsidy to put together a higher NYC plan. As you know, the administration has been a strong supporter and moving forward with a new community hiring regime that we look forward to increasing the ranks of people from neighborhoods where we build to look like people from those neighborhoods.
This bill would require, Intro 910, would require HPD to maintain a publicly searchable online database of all construction projects described in the legislation. Would this reporting requirement supplement any existing online database? And two, what challenges, if any, do you foresee in the implementation and maintenance of this database?
So, currently, we do provide open data information about the projects we finance after the fiscal year. So, we currently make sure that there's information about how public tax dollars are being used to create the affordable housing we finance.
Are there any challenges you foresee in implementing this part of the legislation?
I think that in any expansion of work that we do, there's always, it always comes with a technology and staffing costs that have to be incurred. So, we'd have to look at that seriously and understand what differences in information that we're collecting. So, if we have to collect information in a different way, it comes with a tech and staff challenges. If we are packaging it or putting it up in a different way, we'd have to evaluate that as well.
Some of the database, some of the information that we're referring to that we already publish online is in accordance with Local Law 44, so making sure that we don't have conflicting requirements. And then, again, as the first Deputy Commissioner was saying, that we're aligning as much as possible is always a focus.
Great. Continuing to ask around the tracking of projects, does HPD currently maintain records of all housing development construction employers with active projects throughout the city? Yes or no?
HPD does not play a role in all active projects across the city, so we would not have a database of that kind.
Is it a matter of privacy concerns, or is there a reason sort of why you all don't track?
Well, we don't play a role in all of them. We don't have an active role, so we would not have the information, and it would result in probably duplicative reporting. There are other agencies that would be involved in certain aspects that would have more involvement than HPD.
And if I can just, so from a, if I understand the question, so for HPD financed projects, we're maintaining and keeping those records for projects that are not subsidized but require certain housing incentive support, whether it's zoning or tax payment-related, we have records of how we're working with those projects. Otherwise, they are working with other regulatory agencies to get the permits that they need. So, whether that be DOB, DEP, landmarks if they're in a landmark district, there are other agencies that are working to maintain and manage and oversee them respectively.
Okay. Thank you. That was actually going to be my follow-up question, so you predicted that. I appreciate that.
I'm trying.
HPD testified in September, but you also, in your testimony today, reinforced this about working closely with the New York State Legislature to enact the Affordable Neighborhoods for New Yorkers, also called 485X, the state tax abatement for affordable housing, to include $40 per hour minimum compensation package for construction workers who build projects with more than 100 units. If HPD supports a $40 minimum wage compensation package for construction workers on state-subsidized affordable housing project, why wouldn't HPD fully support the same $40 per hour wage package for workers who build city-subsidized affordable housing projects?
So, I'll start and I'll ask my colleague to chime in. So, we are very proud of the work that was done to drive up a new standard in 485X and that tax abatement. The ability to advance greater worker protections in that program is going to be a huge and important step for New York City. I will say that one of the biggest differences is that those projects largely are mixed-income projects that have a substantial component of market rate rents that allows the income generated to help support greater costs to those projects. So, for our projects, again, we are the gap filler in building an affordability, 100% affordable housing project, where the revenue coming in and the lending and the money they're able to bring into the project to allow for those deeply affordable rents, there's still a gap where the public subsidy comes in and makes the project whole. For those projects within 485X where there is a substantial market component, there is the ability to leverage a different source to allow for something different. And then, just going further down that line, you have, we took a look closely at the type of projects that can support that. So, for projects within higher, the possibility for higher income revenue through market rents, that's where we're able to establish a more, a higher wage ceiling for certain occupations.
Well, a follow-up question to that is, under, you know, certain provisions of MIH, there are, there are projects that are coming online that have a percentage of, you know, unaffordable market-rate apartments. And so, wouldn't that the same be true for those market-rate units covering sort of the gap in cost?
There are two pieces to that. And one is both, yes, market versus the affordable and thinking about what the rental income can support in terms of debt and borrowing, but then also geography. And I will say that, you know, when MIH was created alongside 421A, we understood that these would be two programs that would actually need to work together. So, both covering the high cost of land and adjusting for the limitation on rental income for the affordable housing. So, in these projects, you will see MIH projects that are going to take advantage with 485X in those areas that geographically makes, you know, makes sense on paper and both from a financial perspective and operational perspective can pay the higher wages both for construction workers, building service workers, and allow for what's new, which is the MWBE requirements.
Okay. I'm going to pause our wonderful conversation to give just a few minutes to Julie Menon, to my colleague, for her opening statement on her resolution. If you could just bear with us for a second. Julie?
Oh, thank you so much, Chair Delarosa. I really appreciate it, and apologies for being late. We had another hearing at the same time. So, thank you, Chair. I'm very excited to talk about my resolution, Resolution 522, that calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the Governor to sign legislation supported by Senator Generis and Assemblymember Rosick, known as the Good Jobs Guarantee Act, which would establish certain workforce training programs and increase employment opportunities for New Yorkers. It's absolutely critical to provide good jobs as it helps, obviously, to create a stable future and to overcome barriers. Just this month, the New School Center for New York City Affairs reported that 2019 to 2023 was a period of rising wage inequality eroding the gains that were made in the 2010s. Yet, low-wage workers are increasingly falling behind. In fact, as a result of high inflation, the value of New York City's minimum wage, the report found, had declined. That is why the Good Jobs Guarantee Act is so necessary. It would provide a $100 million guarantee or fund to unlock private funding for proven workforce development programs that guarantee good jobs in emerging industries and align to the consumer protection and financing requirements. A program administrators selected and overseen by the state would utilize a guarantor fund to attract an estimated $1 billion in social impact investments over 10 years, according to an HRNA study. Instead of upfront costs or loans, those who participate contribute a small percentage of their future income once a good-paying job is secured. These funds are then used to help provide career-training seekers. There are clear protections, such as cap repayment periods and hardship exceptions. Additionally, the model ensures participants are never saddled with debt burdens, unlike traditional tuition-based models, because a risk is assigned to the bond issuing entity, workforce development institutions, and investors. Good, high-paying jobs can be transformative. The city can send a clear message to Albany that these jobs are needed for our city to continue helping New Yorkers, especially those that are constantly struggling to live here because of costs from housing to childcare. I want to thank the Chair for allowing me to speak, and I want to thank the resolution supporters, including Councilmember Williams and drafter William Hongach. I also want to thank my team, Jonathan Shepp, Brandon Jordan, and Mercedes Anderson. Thank you so much, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Menon. An important resolution. It's going to take city and state working together to see this happen, so thank you so much.
So, if we may, I'd love to just go back and underscore from the last answer that, to connect that point, that our estimates, when we talk about the cost of this bill, are focused on the impacts on HPD's capital budget and how we would subsidize the affordable housing projects that we would do. So, when we talk about $500 million, that is the money that when you don't, when on the dynamics of our project, when we play, as was discussed, this role as gap financer, when the costs increase, we actually have to put in more money into each of those projects, and that works differently on some of these other examples that you talked about. So, our dollars go less far, and we can do less with them.
Got it. On that same page, one of the things you testified about, Deputy Commissioner, was the four different areas of needs that the new wage requirement would result, would result in a higher cost. One of those is the LIHTC, the Low-Income Tax Credits. What are the additional low-income tax credit needs? Do you have a projection for that?
So...
If this bill were to be, obviously?
So, just to take a step back, on low-income tax credits, you know, independent of this piece of legislation, New York City has been fighting for a greater share. It's made a huge impact in being able to deliver deeply affordable units of affordable housing. We have been asking, we actually have a federal legislative package that we've been working to advance to increase that number. And we've had, we've seen some movement in Congress and look forward, and I know we've had council support in the past for seeing changes made so that we can better use it. For here, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, the main fear, because we have to see how this would play out on a project-by-project basis, is that the increased cost of those projects would end up putting at risk our ability to fully leverage our LIHTC resource. And in fact, we would end up, because the cost of the projects would go up, we would end up using more LIHTC for each project, because LIHTC comes with a requirement that you have to, you have to fund 50% of that project with LIHTC for it to be eligible for LIHTC. So, if the cost of the project goes up, then the LIHTC allocation goes up, which means it's less available for other projects. And then, once you take LIHTC out of the equation, then you're, then you're funding projects with just straight city capital, and that, those city capital dollars are enormous. So, we basically look, and we can talk a little bit about the specific numbers here, but the, we are looking at balance, or we try to use different resources to balance out how much of the city capital we can, we use. This way, we can fund a greater number of projects across the board with these different funding sources. By making the projects more expensive than need LIHTC, we increase the number of, much, again, repeating, but increase the LIHTC allocation, meaning we have less LIHTC to spread across more projects, and we ultimately will likely look at less projects, resulting in thousands of units not done every year.
Have you all sort of done a projection of how much more of LIHTC dollars are needed from the federal level at this point?
Well, I think at this point, there, it's either a greater amount of volume cap in order to meet projects that we're currently working on. Plus, as we've said in the past, we do have, we continue to have projects in our pipeline that if we had more LIHTC and more resource, we'd be able to do an effective job to get into it. So, we don't, the amount that we have, or the number is, we're looking for either exceptions for certain types of project to LIHTC or a greater percentage of volume cap overall.
Okay. Thank you for answering that. What portion of housing projects overseen by HPD would be subject to the requirements outlined in this bill? Do you have a percentage?
So... Almost all of them. The numbers are very high, and that's how we looked at it for modeling purposes.
Which wage laws are non-union contractors bound by? Are there any of those laws regulated, and are any of those laws regulated by HPD, or are they primarily governed by state-imposed minimum wage standards?
So, they're bound by all state and federal labor laws, enforcement largely done by the State Department of Labor. You know, this includes minimum wage, overtime, frequency of pay, meal periods, and rest days. The other, the other part of it is, and I think came, coming through the, coming through this body, there was recent legislation focused on construction labor licensing, which is a huge and significant piece of the labor workforce on sites, which include a Bill of Rights for Temporary Workers and other general protections, including the recognition of assignments. So, getting into issues about protective gear and pay and work schedules.
And while we don't have enforcement authority on, for necessarily all of these, we have a strong labor monitoring team and the infrastructure that we coordinate closely with all of the other enforcement agencies. So, whether it's the State Department of Labor, the Federal Department of Labor, at times it's HUD, the Attorney General's Office, other city agencies, and the task force. So, there is this infrastructure for when things come to our attention, there is collaboration across, but HPD does not have the enforcement authority ourselves.
Got it. Intro 910 proposes that housing developers pay workers on specific projects a minimum total compensation of $40 per hour, including at least $25 in wages. Could you provide the current average hourly wage and benefit package for construction workers on HPD affordable housing projects?
Yes, thank you for that question. So, certain HPD projects trigger federal, primarily federal, Davis-Bacon prevailing wages. We've talked about the different labor laws that apply to non-pervailing wage projects. We, because we, laborers and mechanics, that's the language from Davis-Bacon, are typically are paid different rates based on the type of work and the trade. So, we see that there is, you know, variation across, across projects. We also see that wages can vary based on broader economic forces within the market. So, there are absolutely folks who are earning upwards of $90 to $100 an hour, and then there are folks at sort of at various levels throughout the pay scale, and this is something that we see across the market.
Okay. All right. Let me ask a question about a project that is currently, that has been currently happening. So, in the past few years, Santero Verde and Bronx Point, two 100% affordable housing projects that receive HPD subsidies, were built with a $40 wage agreement that included strong community hiring for residents of the South Bronx and East Harlem. If these affordable projects could pay $40 an hour to the lowest-paid construction laborers, then why can't other cities subsidize affordable projects also pay a $40 an hour as this bill would require?
So, thank you for the question. No project is a complete imprint or copy of any other project. Every underwriting pro forma comes with dozens of different particular aspects, different funding sources. It could be as specific as the borrowing terms from their lender, non-city or public funding sources, the rents on-site, the commercial rents, looking at what the operating costs and their ability to pay debt in the future. All of these factors come to play when they think about what kind of loans they can take out for the initial construction and then be able to be in a position to convert to a permanent loan later on. So, there are, you know, there certainly has been projects that have been able to work out different arrangements and partnerships with, with regards to wages. And I know that there's been efforts made by... And I know that there's been efforts made by different worker committees and labor to work with these developers to find collaborative ways to work together. If there are opportunities for that, we always try to make sure that we're, we're hearing and being part of those conversations early on.
Yeah. I guess my question is sort of like, what triggers HPD to be proactively asking about if that wage standard is doable, right? Because a developer isn't going to come up and be like, hey, guess what? I can pay workers $40 an hour, you know? I have the deep pockets to do so. It, it happens within the process of negotiation. And so my question is, at what point does the administration say, hey, this is a project where we could, we could explore paying workers these wages? What triggers sort of that conversation in the process?
I think one important piece is, this is not about, you're right, this is not about whether a developer shows up and says they're going to pay for it, because it's actually about whether HPD is going to pay for it, right? So it's in the mix of all of these levers, whether we're going to have the deepest levels of affordability, whether we're going to, how we structure, which programs we use, right? Those are all things that we're constantly trying to look at in, within the context of a particular deal. How can we maximize the public benefit? So this isn't about who, you know, what someone else, you know, is always going to bring to us, it's looking at what the options are on the table and trying to maximize the public value, which can both include, at times, minimum wages for workers, as well as what are we getting in terms of the value for our subsidy? And that subsidy is limited, and so those are trade-offs that we take very seriously.
And then the only thing I would add is through, like, the neighborhood planning processes, projects that go through public review and discretionary review, certainly the question about whether or not there's an opportunity to do different kind of job standards comes up. So there is this sort of proactive conversation that occurs. And to Lucy's point, we come back and understand what the trade-offs are, because the community may ask for three or four or five things, and we are trying to figure out how to make the best consensus work out with the limited subsidy that we have.
So one of the things that this bill also does is that it wants, it wants to look at the zip codes in the city where poverty is high, right? Like, it's not a secret, like, if we overlay all the maps, the COVID deaths, right, the, where people are unhoused, these things are clear, that they're happening in certain communities across the city. And those are also the community where workers are being exploited, where wages are stagnant and low, and remain low, and it's also the same communities where the same workers that are building up our city can't even afford to apply for the housing lottery, right? Because they just are not making the money to get an apartment in the city of New York and let alone, you know, make a living. So in, when you all are having conversations, in, like, I see, like, the Bronx, East Harlem, right? I dare say Washington Heights, Inwood, the district where I represent, when you all are having those conversations in areas of the city where, you know, there's deep poverty, is that a factor that you all are looking at to bring to the table, sort of, the local hiring component, the, the, and the wage floor that we're trying to put forth in this legislation?
So, I'll start, and then, so I would say that certainly the local hiring component is a huge part of many of our community visioning processes that we do in neighborhoods, either for individual RFP projects, or when HPD is representing and working through the housing conversation and neighborhood plan. We have within, at minimum, the requirement for hire NYC, but more often than not, we're working with local job training recruitment centers. We're partnering with SBS and their workforce training center to look at other allies and, you know, collaborators in the neighborhood. Beyond that, our MWBE commitment, since 2017, we've been able to put nearly $2 billion of our subsidy into black and brown and women-led firms, so that we have more of the people who live in our neighborhoods being part of the development of our, of our projects. And then, you know, we look beyond that, and we're coming up, we're, we're coming up to the community hiring work that is currently, the draft rules are before the public now, and being able to implement that work so that we're sourcing more from the neighborhoods where we're building in will be the next milestone and achievement, certainly in our procurement work, and we'll continue to look for more opportunities on the development side.
Yeah, I'll just say, I think we could have a whole hearing on MWB and how that actually plays out in communities, but I'll leave that for another day. I'm going to pass it over to, to Councilmember Menon, who has some questions, and then I'll come back. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chair. So a number of questions. First of all, has the administration kept records of the number of workforce development organization, organizations by sector?
I'm sorry, I think those are, I don't have those numbers, but we can refer to the Office of Talent and Workforce and get back to the committee with those numbers.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. I just want to see the breakdown by sector on that information. So could you clarify, does the administration support the Good Jobs Guarantee Act, and would it signal to lawmakers in Albany the importance of unlocking millions of dollars in funds to create jobs in the city?
So we, unfortunately, HPD, we are hero pining on Intro 910, but we certainly will make sure to tell our colleagues at, at the Office of Talent and Workforce to follow up regarding the resolution.
Okay. So you'll get back to the committee then on that? Yeah, I just want to get clarification on the administration's view on that bill and on any steps they're taking to help to support the passage of that bill in Albany. And what are the administration's goals for workforce training investment for jobs specifically in the technology sector?
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer to that, but I, again, all three questions, we can make sure we get back to you, Councilmember.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. I want to ask about fringe benefits, essential benefits. 910 would require developers to provide construction workers with essential benefit package that includes medical, dental insurance, retirement accounts, and annuities. What benefits are currently guaranteed to non-union construction workers on HPD projects? And what percentage of construction workers on HPD housing projects have health insurance at this time?
So this is information that's regulated by state labor laws and other laws. HPD doesn't have an enforcement or administration role in it, so unfortunately, we don't have access to that, the percentages and those numbers.
So when you all are doing sort of like the underwriting, especially on affordable housing projects, does HPD make assumptions about the wages for construction workers? And do those assumptions include information about health insurance and other fringe, fringe benefits offered by general contractors, subcontractors, et cetera?
Yeah, so across prevailing wage projects and non-pervailing wage projects, employers will sometimes pay someone separate. Here is your wage, and here are your fringe benefits. Sometimes that is a combined wage that meets the, for example, in federal prevailing wage, the requirement on both sides. So those numbers can be represented differently in different circumstances. So we don't always have access to whether or not that is inclusive or separate on a non-pervailing wage project. But for purposes of figuring out the costs, we have done a lot of work to try to understand where we think the market currently is and what we would expect the lowest-paid workers to be currently paid, whether that's being paid separately from benefits or inclusive of, because those can vary in the different types of relationships or workplace relationships that are established.
But when you're in the process of negotiating, sort of what that wage structure looks like, are these questions that you're asking of developers and tracking sort of where, what the wage amounts to, if it's a separate payment for workers for health insurance costs and all of that?
Typically, HPD doesn't play a role directly in those negotiations between a subcontractor, for example, and their workers. That is a, something that we are not at the table for. It's a private relationship that we actually don't have regulatory authority over.
And is that because the, the assumption is that the state is going to have sort of regulatory eyes on, on what that negotiation looks like?
Should those, should any of those payment relationships, I don't want to, you know, assume if it's a contract, et cetera, but should those payment relationships violate state law or federal law, then absolutely. And if we become aware of it, right, through our, our work on the project, any of the monitoring that happens, we would absolutely refer them to the, to the enforcement authorities and work together to the extent necessary to try to rectify anything that happens on those projects.
I mean, it seems to me that this is an area that is ripe for exploitation, and that, you know, if there is a track record of this type of behavior, the city should indeed have a way, even if the enforcement and it's not in your jurisdiction, but to continue a working relationship with that type of employer for city subsidized projects.
Yes, the state, when someone is found guilty of, of wage theft or other violations, there is a, an enforcement process by which a, an employer can be labeled or debarred even, and then we factor that information in, and of course, that is, that is relevant.
Okay. We've been joined by Councilmember Gail Brewer. Hi, Gail. Okay, let me see what else we have here. Does, if HPD does not support the wage threshold proposed in this bill, is there an alternative wage standard or framework that HPD would endorse for city-assisted housing projects?
I think at this time, there, we don't have a particular number or counterproposal, but we're happy to continue discussing this. Again, for us, every, you know, fiscal year, we're trying to balance, and these sources, some of it is clear, some of it's subsidy, some of it's federal, where we have to wait to understand what those numbers are. And we also know that the need for developing housing, and especially preserving housing, is great. So these are not, we don't have a particular rebuttal, but we're, again, we're happy to continue discussing.
Thank you. What are some of the challenges that you foresee for smaller developers in meeting wage and hiring standards?
So I, I think some of the, there's two parts to this. A, the additional, there's the additional costs that come with it, which may make it different, difficult for them to be competitive in this work. Additionally, the administrative and the operational pieces of the legislation would make it difficult, especially for emerging and new subcontractors to this industry, in this industry, to be in compliance with the legislation, that it can include additional technology costs, additional internal operation, operation and labor costs, for them to be in compliance with the bill.
So this, I'll add, that this bill is, has the enforcement structure that mirrors prevailing wage enforcement. And on prevailing wage enforcement projects, there is proactive submission of payrolls, et cetera. So there is, separate from any costs incurred by the city, it requires substantial back-office functions that not all small subcontractors have. And so we absolutely see that that can be a factor which limits their ability to participate, their willingness to participate, right, to add those staff members, because typically what we see is people have to have additional staff to be able to provide those pay, proactive, that proactive paperwork, including but not limited to payrolls. It also means that sometimes general contractors are less willing to hire folks they haven't worked with before, because they don't have that trusting relationship or the confidence that they're going to be able to hire the additional staff and do the additional payroll and that work. All of that can be a limiting factor for some of the newer entrants into the market, smaller contractors, MWBEs, et cetera. Some of those folks that we really want to make sure are getting those opportunities to, to work on HPD projects. So some of the structure of how wage enforcement or wage requirements is structured is really important.
Yeah. I, I would think that we, as a city, could come up with ways to support smaller contractors in getting some of the support that they need to do the backend, because I think that that's where we will see, you know, people's wages being played with, right? It's not fair also for workers to, to spend, you know, hours on a job site, working, you know, excruciating weather conditions, et cetera, to build up our city and then have no way of actually tracking, you know, how, how they've been exploited, if wage theft does occur.
Building out that support, our colleagues in the Department of Small Business Services, there are efforts to do that, and that's something that we are very committed to. It's just also something else that costs additional money on each of these projects and something that we then think about in the context of trade-offs and overall, you know, where is the limited budget going to?
There has been a number of, I think, important and good steps forward to protecting workers and creating safer job sites just over the last couple of years. When I was at the OB, we were involved with Local Law 196. There was construction safety legislation that's been passed since then. You know, those are examples of both, like, the, the positive and trials, positive elements in the trials of working through this. So I agree, we can always and do have examples of and should come up with more examples to support these businesses, but it doesn't take away from the initial cost impact and their ability, you know, barrier to entry questions that come up.
I'm going to ask one more question, and I'm going to pass it to Gail for some questions. You cited Local Law 44 earlier today. I can't remember if it was in your testimony or in answering one of the questions, but one of the things that we've heard from the industry is that HPD has not provided any wage data in response to FOIL requests, nor updates on Local Law 97, not Local Law 44 data, as you were legally required to do. Do you have, you know, can we talk a little bit about that? And, and is HPD saying that the standard is not economically viable? Is, yeah, and I, but have, but you have failed to kind of provide the information for the industry to make those assessments. So is, where are we with Local Law 44 and the information that's been requested sort of by the industry?
My understanding is that wage requirement, or wage information is treated differently under Local Law 44, so it's not published on open data, as it's not part of the provisions of the law, and therefore, the system was not built to do that. I am not aware of challenges in terms of FOIL with this, but we certainly can look into that and get back to you.
But if someone were to make a FOIL request, HPD would certainly be forthcoming with that information.
Well, I can't speak specifically to whether or not there are any sort of legal obstacles to why that has not been, why that's been a challenge potentially, but we certainly could look into it. I don't know of any.
Great. So let's follow up on that point later on offline, so that we can try and, and get that cleared off. I'll pass it over to Gail. Gail?
Thank you very much. I read your testimony, but my question is this, because I am very supportive of the concept of what this bill is calling for. But in anticipation, I tried to have the, what I would call, fully affordable nonprofits talk to the union, because I think there's a difference, and I want to make sure you do also, between, I won't name names, but ex-for-profit developer, putting 20% in his or her MIH or something else. That person should follow the bill, in my opinion. But there is another, which, believe it or not, the union had no idea, I'm just being honest with you, I won't say who, that there are nonprofits who do 100%. I know nonprofits, they wouldn't build market if you gave them a million dollars. They don't believe in it. So I am looking for support, I want to know what you think, the difference. There's a big difference between a developer who is mostly marketed in the building, but has some affordable, and then the 100% nonprofit who only builds affordable, having to comply with this. And I don't know if you've had any discussions along these lines, but I tried to get the nonprofit community to talk to the union, because the union had no idea that there is such an animal.
Sorry. So I think one thing that we, we mentioned earlier is that ultimately, if it's a for-profit or even it's a nonprofit, which in them, you know, they themselves would see some of the same issues with finding general contractors, subcontractors, especially in the operation, admin, and backend side, the money would still come out of HPD subsidy. So the cost and impact, the $500 million, the loss of units, regardless of who the entity upfront is, would still be the same. So our bill, our requirement to have to think about the trade-offs, sustainability, depth of affordability, wages, et cetera, would still be there. And then, in addition, you know, you have nonprofits would then, like the for-profits, would have to think about it from the operational and admin side. They would have to create a new structure to follow the, the wage reporting regiment. They would have to figure out the backend services, the compliance requirements, oversee a general contractor and a subcontractor bidding. So there would be additional costs that they would have to absorb that they may...
Who's "they" now? We're talking about the for-profit? I don't care about the for-profit guys.
So we're, everything that I said would also apply to a not, you know, a non-for-profit affordable housing developer from the administrative side. And then the lack of, of subsidy availability to deal with all of the things we need would apply also to nonprofit affordable developers, because it's HPD subsidy that would be, that we're talking about.
Okay, I don't really understand, I'll be honest with you. What I'm trying to say is, so you don't see the difference between the nonprofit who builds only affordable and the for-profit who builds affordable, who builds affordable because they make more money that way?
So then I would say that the for, if you're talking about for-profit doing mixed income housing...
Yeah, mixed income, yes. I don't care about them, they should go with this.
So in 40, 5X, in those areas that would require it, we see a $40 minimum wage. We see building services, workers, their union, we see the other requirements that come with the bill, and that's because the market rate units in those areas that meet those requirements in the 40, 5X, they can support paying the higher wages. So yes, there, there is a difference there.
Right. And this legislation, as we understand it, and as we modeled for purposes of saying, this is how much we think this was costing, these would be the impacts, is focused on HPD's portfolio of almost entirely, you know, 100% affordable or mostly affordable. or mostly affordable projects. So we shrink the universe there as a starting point. And then when we talk about, well, who is a developer on the other side of it, that is where we start talking about the fact that when the costs increase on these projects associated with the wage requirements, that's when HPD fills in more money to make sure it still can happen. So it's not about whether or not there is a difference between, we see that what you mean in terms of different types of projects. But in terms of who is on the other end of it, we're still talking about the impact on HPD's budget. And in a budget-constrained environment, what choices that's going to cause us to be, have to make.
I know, but when it's a 20% MIH, the developer has the market to carry some of this. But when it's 100% nonprofit, there isn't that delta.
If it's a 20, yes, sorry. If it's a 20% MIH, and again, the.
Or whatever, you know.
Yeah, no, 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 of course. Whatever the, the split is between market and affordable, part of it is not only the split in the market income versus the income restricted income, it's also the geography that commands certain market rent. So, that's part of what goes into the operating costs that figure out whether or not you can make certain, uh, construction costs, and then later, permanent costs, like building service workers, work. And so that is the other part of the equation, where.
Okay, I mean, I guess my feeling would be, this is me, that's why I haven't signed on. I am concerned about the nonprofits, but I want everybody else to pay. That's just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. And I, I'll just say to that, you know, it's a question I've been thinking about, obviously. Like, coming from the community that I represent, building affordable housing is very important, um, especially for the type of constituents that I represent. Um, you know, not to mix topics here, but, you know, the administration is asking the council to also consider City of Yes as we look at this. And part of it is to be bold and look at the ways in which we can change the framework of how we build housing. For me, it's, you know, aggravating when we're kind of asked to, uh, change the reality of what the needs of our communities are, and we're pitting that need for affordable housing versus the, the need of the worker, right? And I think that this is the opportunity, pardon the pun, but it's the opportunity for us to kind of reimagine the way that we're having these conversations. And I know that we've had the conversation around term sheets and what that looks like, and how we are, are, uh, relying on other tax abatements and other help, um, to finance affordability. But there, that, we can imagine a reality where we can build affordable and also pay workers a dignified wage, right? And so, I'm asking us to kind of be bold in that way as well, the same way that the administration's asking us to be bold and imagine, you know, basement dwellings and no parking and all of these other things. We also have to be bold and imagine that there is a worker at the other side of that affordability that we're trying to build in our city. Um, and so, it's kind of aggravating to have the conversation that pits, because, you know, I've, I was in Albany for five years. We passed some of the strongest tenant protections in, in, in the history of our state. I am so committed to tenants and the plight of tenants and the need to build affordable. At, at this time, I kind of feel like the conversation pits those two needs against each other, where we should be looking at ways and opportunities where we can actually have both things coexist.
I think we share those concerns. Why we're here, what we're doing today is not trying to deepen that sort of, that pitting of those values, as you said. Um, we want to be really clear and transparent about how we see this impacting HPD's budget. There is a lot of confusion about, at which times is this about, uh, something costing developers more money versus HPD more money? And what are the trade-offs that we would have to make? And we want to be really upfront about what those are. Our estimates are this would cost a lot of money per year, and that the ways that we would address that are building fewer units. Our estimates are that we would build anywhere from 1,000 to 2,500 fewer units per year. Um, we probably would have to do less deep affordability. Um, some of the programs that we talk about, we won't have as much access to. So those are, while someone may frame those as pitting against each other, and I get that, we also want to have a really serious conversation that looks at what are the impacts? And how do we balance that to get the best outcome we can for the city, for New Yorkers, for everyone?
And the only other, and the only other two things I would add is, you, you mentioned, you know, rent regulated housing. We, you know, rent regulation is one of the most important, um, protectors of affordable housing in the city. And at nearly a million units, it doesn't, you know, you know, in itself, meet the affordability need of the city. So we, as HPD, are constantly thinking of how many more units we can add to that, uh, before people can no longer, like, live here and subsist in New York. Wages and job growth is a very important piece of that. We see primarily our ability to help with that by creating a stable roof and affordable housing, deeply affordable housing, to be part of that solution. And then, uh, you know, the second part of it is that there, as you pointed out, with term sheets or other pieces, there are a lot of specific minutia into what we're trying to do to make it, uh, possible for developers, nonprofits, to be out there and compete, be able to get the lending that they need, to pay the insurance that they need to get the projects off the ground. So there are a lot of different cost increases across the board we're trying to address. And, you know, wages is one of that. But to your, to that point, we're trying to look at all of these and balance them.
And not to just keep going back here, but, um, one of what we see, unfortunately, is that for most New Yorkers, housing is their biggest cost. And that is the lever that we are constantly trying to adjust. And that makes it a very important part of any economic development conversation.
Great. Thank you, um, for engaging us. And, and I think that this is why this bill is important, because it brings us to the table to have these realistic conversations about how we get those two things done. Um, I don't have the number, but what is the current minimum wage on non-revering wage projects?
So, the minimum wage on non-revering wage projects would be the minimum, minimum wage statewide? So, there's not a separate one for HPD?
Okay, okay, okay.
That's not necessarily what we see, because that's not really what the labor market dictates, for the most part.
Okay. Um, going back to intro 910, so, we talked about the 30% at, that I, the, the bill would require developers to ensure that at least 30% of the hours worked on the project are worked by residents of the zip code, with at least a 15% of the population is below the federal poverty rate. Um, or residents of NICA development. How would the agency track to verify that 30% of the hours are met on each project?
So, right now, we have, uh, before the public, um, our advancing of rules to establish our new community hiring program. Um, a lot of the work we're trying to do to figure out how we would track our work recruiting from members of the community where we're building these projects, is part of that public conversation. Uh, so that's what we're looking to in terms of input and, uh, developing the framework moving forward around community hiring. Uh, additionally, you know, we have experience doing this uh, through our Section 3 requirements on federal dollars that we spend, where we're looking and tracking with employers. There are definitely, uh, technology and off-the-shelf software that we use, that have been used, uh, in the industry and standard, in being able to track some of this information. Again, the more specific and particular we get with different conditions, uh, that either lock in or lock out certain zip codes, that would come with a tech cost that we'd have to evaluate down the line.
Will HPD assist in connecting developers with recruitment resources or workforce development pro, programs?
I, we're fortunate to have a great partner, uh, in Small Business Services, who does that with us currently. We work closely with the Workforce Development, um, centers throughout the city. And I would say that over the last, you know, 10 years or so, through our neighborhood planning work, we've actually established, uh, a network of great relationships with different training and workforce development nonprofits across the city that we leverage often, uh, for help on this.
What about NICA? How would you be able to engage NICA residents to raise awareness?
So, uh, REES, and, uh, REES, which is their main center for workforce development and community development, is a partner, uh, that we work with often when we are collaborating on projects. In fact, I mentioned earlier, the Housing and Career Pathways Program, which is, uh, started as a pilot with Enterprise in 2022, and now has grown, uh, seven cohorts deep. Where we work with REES, we work with Enterprise, we work, uh, with our nonprofit partner, Brooklyn Workers Initiative, um, to recruit and bring people into different jobs in the housing task, uh, housing workforce. And we actually just graduated our 101st, uh, graduate, uh, recently. So we look to scale that program and continue to grow in the future.
Great, thank you. I'll pass it to Councilmember Restler for questions.
Thank you so much, Chair De La Rosa. Um, I just have to say, I'm, I don't serve on this committee, so, um, it's a privilege to be here. And we, as a council and as a city, are just incredibly fortunate to have your leadership of this committee and really appreciate everything you do. Um, and I want to thank HPD for the chance to be, for the testimony today. Uh, I just want to maybe bring it back to local experiences in my district. Uh, right now, we have two projects in and around District 33. One in, in the heart of Brooklyn Heights, uh, at St. Francis, one, uh, up in Williamsburg, and Jen, and Councilmember Gutierrez's district, but on a project that, uh, means a lot to her and I both, where the developers have brought in a demolition company that has a deeply troubled record. A deeply concerning record of wage theft, of being misleading, uh, uh, with, uh, the public. I mean, I could go on at, at great length about the worker intimidation around, you know, how they have lied and cheated and, and frankly, stolen money. And yet, I have no leverage to stop them, right? I called the developer, I set up calls, I say, "I'm really concerned about this company, Alba, and their record." And the developer says, you know, "We did a bidding process, they came in at the best price, and it is what it is." Um, I, I appreciate that there are costs here that are associated with Councilmember De La Rosa's bill. It's a good bill, one that I support. Um, I realize it's a zero, it's not a zero-sum, or that it is a zero-sum game, in, in the sense that we have a certain number of resources, we're trying to maximize it as much as possible for affordable housing, for good jobs, for all of the things. But without her legislation, we have no mechanism to prevent an entity like this, Alba, that frankly has been undermining worker experience in my community and across the city from actually being kept out, right? From doing this work. And so, that's why I support the bill. Do you have any advice for me with, if you all have said you don't support this legislation? Do you have any mechanisms that I have leverage now to put pressure to stop a bad actor from coming into our community, undermining, you know, the experience of workers, um, uh, you know, in, in my community on big, complicated projects?
So, thank you for that question. Um, we take issues of wage enforcement, uh, wage theft. Um, it sounds like there's a range of issues that you're referencing really seriously. We do see that as, um, a slightly different issue that's not necessarily addressed. We have not seen instances where changing a worker's pay is what addresses bullying, intimidation, and wage theft. We believe that the most important way to combat those are with enforcement mechanisms. So whenever those are happening, they need to be addressed. I also hear you asking the question about the leverage over which contractors are involved. I'm actually also not sure that that's what's addressed by this legislation. And in fact, what we've seen is that in some of the more complicated wage schemes, we actually see a narrowing of the market, so even fewer contractors that are bidding, et cetera.
But I think that this legislation would ensure that we have, are more likely to have union labor, which is more likely to deliver safe working conditions for the workers, better quality outcomes for our communities and for the development projects. This legislation would help advance those likely goals. And right now, I have no way to exert any real, um, influence other than, you know, calling and trying my best to be persuasive and charming, which sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. Um, I wish it worked more. Um, maybe Carmen can give me some tips. The, um, but, I'm being persuasive. The, um, but I ca, I am struggling to persuade the developers in my community who are hiring bad actors like Alba. I can't stop them. And it is dangerous, and I'm concerned, I mean, I could give you a laundry list of issues from unpaid premiums, of worker intimidation and fraud, general liability insurance, uh, where they've been sued over breach of contract multiple times, millions of dollars in wage theft. There's NLRB issues, there's safety environmental concerns. There are extensive issues with this company. And basically, what you're saying to me is, well, they should go in and, we should have enforcement agents go out and look at what's happening onsite, or have, I mean, how is that going to help me in the current situation I've got? This legislation would ensure that we're less likely to have bad actors like Alba operating in our communities than we are today.
Look, we see, uh, wage theft, unfortunately, happening in a very wide range of circumstances, right? You can see it on prevailing wage projects, it's why we have a whole unit for it. So, I'm not sure that that would solve the problem. I'm not confident enough. Unfortunately, this is just something that we have to deal with and have to be vigilant about and have to be aggressive about. And so, whether or not this bill is a good idea, I think is separate from a really important discussion about enforcing the requirements of state, uh, and federal labor laws. And if that, I don't know any, I don't know about, unfortunately, that particular project or that, uh, that contractor. But there is a process, we mentioned this a bit earlier, by which those contractors actually can lose their ability to work on projects. And so, we want to make sure that when we are having these conversations about, uh, about wages, about wage theft, that when we're talking, that we're talking about really structuring enforcement mechanisms in a way that they're best enforced. And that we have the really important conversation about wage, uh, wage theft and make sure that people are not experiencing these things. But we have, unfortunately, continued to see them in all manners of wage administrations. And so I think it's less about the vehicle and more about ensuring that we are aggressive in enforcing all of the applicable requirements and laws, effectively.
And I would just add, like, so the affirmative confirmed cases where this happens through the other oversight bodies, when it does come to an HPD project, there's a review process where we can, uh, look into it. And if these are HPD projects, we can follow up, you asked, and we can certainly look at them.
One is, and I would like to follow up on it. But, 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 but what this legislation would do is that if there's any city resources going in, it may not be an HPD project, that it would help, it would ensure that there's much greater oversight in who's getting hired, right? And so, so for an example, like the St. Francis project that we have in, in downtown, in Brooklyn Heights, there are, there is city support for the project. And it's not an HPD-funded project. Um, but we would have leverage here that we don't have currently, if I understand it correctly.
Well, and again, we have other, there are other agencies and bodies within the administration that have, uh, already a robust and experienced regime on worker rights. For instance, we talked a little bit earlier about the temporary construction, um, worker regiment that has recently been adopted and, uh, is, and with DCWP as one avenue for temporary construction workers to be able to be assured of certain rights, requirements, information sharing, and we can build on that, for sure. So there are other, to Lucy's point, this is a very important conversation, definitely want to talk about it. But additionally, when we bring wages into it, we're talking about a, a smaller slice of all the construction that happens in the city, a slice that is nearly enough, because we, you know, the, we are in a constrained environment for capital, and we're just trying to make sure that if we're going to make trade-offs, we understand that we'll be making a limited slice, maybe a little bit more limited.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chair. Thank you, HPD.
Thank you. Um, as we get ready to hear from the Comptroller's Office, I wanted to ask specifically, how will HPD coordinate with the Comptroller's Office to share and receive information about developers' wage compliance and community hiring plans?
So, right now, we actually have, uh, we, we work with the Comptroller's Office on a range of different pieces, including on oversight from, uh, everything from invoice to development finance. We work collectively and regularly with the Comptroller's Office. I will say that one of the questions here is, what, if, you know, if there is a requirement and oversight regime, what is the most streamlined and direct and, uh, least barrier of entry for companies who would be involved in this work? And so, we do have, um, we do have things that exist now that, uh, companies may be, uh, more streamlined to be, or more easily adopt and be streamlined for them to adopt if we move forward with any oversight regime. We would talk to the Comptroller's Office, we would talk to the council about what those are. I think at the end of the day, when, and this comes to any of the construction, labor, protection, and wage work that's happened over the last couple of years, when we're thinking about compliance, we really have to drill down and figure out what is the most effective and least prohibitive barrier of entry so these companies can comply.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that. We recognize that HPD, like many other municipal agencies, has been struggling with high vacancy rates. You talked about staffing earlier today. What would your department be able to adequately fulfill all of the requirements assigned in this bill while contending with other staffing?
I think, you know, right now, we are, we've actually done a lot to try to rebuild and deliver back-to-back record years in terms of financing and preserving affordable homes in New York City. This is a bill that we, we're still trying to understand the different parameters for and cannot say yet that we have, we have what we would need to implement as written. So that would come after a discussion about what this legislation would do and what the parameters of it would be.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here today. Up next, we have a representative from the Comptroller's Office, Claudia Henriquez. Hi, Claudia. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair.
Hi, Claudia.
Testing?
Yes, thank you for being here, and you may begin.
My name is Claudia Henriquez. I'm the Director of Worker Rights and the Bureau of Labor Law at the office of the New York City Comptroller Brad Lander. Thank you to the Committee on Civil Service and Labor and to Chair Carmen De La Rosa for the opportunity to testify today. I'm here to speak on Intro 910, which establishes wage standards for city-assisted housing development projects. The Comptroller's Bureau of Labor Law is authorized by state and local law to enforce a prevailing wage in New York City. Since Comptroller Lander came into office in 2022, the Bureau has recovered over $8 million in back wages in interest to workers and civil penalties for the city. Intro 910 is patterned after local prevailing wage laws that the office already enforces, and our dedicated team of attorneys, investigators, auditors, classification specialists, and administrators has the experience and the expertise to enforce this law if it passes. We commend the council for strengthening labor protections in city-assisted construction projects. Comptroller Lander strongly believes that where city money is being spent, the workers on those projects should earn fair wages and have strong labor protections. The comptroller also believes that much more deeply affordable housing is needed to meet the needs of New Yorkers. Strong labor protections and wage standards on affordable housing projects should come along with increased city capital so that the same depth of affordability and levels of production can be reached. We have, we're speaking on the labor side, and so, we have a few technical edits that we believe will strengthen the legislation and the enforcement. They're explained more fully in our written comments, but I will highlight a few of those now. First is the current definition of construction employer, which refers to any entity, quote, "employing a construction worker." That definition should also add a term such as directly or indirectly, such as through a subcontractor or subcontractors, to account for those kinds of indirect employment relationships. The bill makes, later in the bill, it makes a construction employer liable for the wages owed by their subcontractors, but without changing the definition, the construction employer could in many cases be the subcontractor and thus rendering that provision ineffective at reaching the prime contractor. Furthermore, we propose revising the date of the wage publication. Currently, that date is set for December 31, 2025. We propose that instead it align with the other schedules that are issued by the comptroller, our construction prevailing wage schedules, wage schedules for city service contractors, which are issued July 1 of each calendar year. And so, therefore, we would propose that in the interest of both efficiency from our office staff and then for those employers who are accustomed to looking for our schedules on July 1, that all of those dates be aligned. Finally, we hope that if the bill does pass, it's accompanied by additional resources for our staff, including additional attorneys, investigators, and auditors, as well as funding to establish the electronic document submission portal that's contemplated by the statute so that we can properly audit the documents that are supposed to be submitted to us, certified payroll reports. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. We look forward to ongoing opportunities to partner with the council to champion strong labor standards for workers.
Thank you. I have some questions for you, and I love it how you give us your technical edits and then say, "Give us more money to do this." Very, very nice. Okay, so let me ask you a few questions. You testified that the, obviously, the Comptroller's Office of the Bureau enforces wage standards and prevailing wage, or living wage for city contracts and city subsidized projects. Does the Comptroller's Office play a role in enforcing the compliance of any other construction projects?
So, we enforce under Article 8 of the labor law, as well as state laws where the developer receives a tax benefit, so this includes the construction wage standards under 421A, as well as our colleagues at HPD mentioned 485X, so that, that construction wage standard is under our enforcement as well.
Intro 910 mandates annual adjustment to wages and benefits based on the rates of inflation, the Consumer Price Index for urban wage earners in our metropolitan area, or the U.S. Department of Labor's successor index. What is the sustainability and fairness of this approach, particularly in balancing developer costs and worker protections?
So, you know, I can't really speak to the cost element as far as the developers. I can say that we have a unit, a classifications unit, that adjusts the wage requirements once a year, in some cases twice a year, for all construction projects. And so, they would have the expertise to be able to make those calculations. So we would be able to, I don't think there would be any issue in terms of the implementation as far as the impact on developers. I think that would be more for HPD to address.
Okay, thank you. In Intro 910, the Comptroller's Office is tasked with monitoring compliance to oversee and enforce wage and community hiring requirements. Does your office see any challenges with insurance compliance, or how might your office address them?
So, I think that the wage enforcement would be, you know, in line with the work that we're already doing. We don't currently have enforcement authority over community hiring metrics under any other law, and so that would be a new area. As far as the challenges, this particular statute contemplates that all of the employers that are subject to this law submit records to our office. That's currently not the case for most construction laws. Usually, our cases come to us via complaints, and so to have an automatic process whereby we are reviewing every single project that comes in is quite staff-intensive, and so that is, you know, the little pitch at the end for additional resources. Also, the online portal, there is a state bill that passed that requires the Department of Labor, and I believe also the city's working on one to collect certified payroll reports electronically. That does not yet exist. And so, we just have to figure out how to work all of that into some structures that are being put into place, but we currently don't have that technology either.
Is there a mechanism in place right now that allows for an aggrieved persons to submit complaints for Comptroller's review at this time?
Yes, they can very easily file complaints on our website.
Great. Any questions? All right. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, I now open the floor for public testimony. Before we begin, I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that the quorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recording to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing and have not already done so, please fill out an appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms and wait for your name to be called. Once you have been recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's hearing topic regarding Intro 910 and Reso 522. If you have written testimony or additional written testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of the testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. When you hear your name, please come up to the witness panel for the first panel. We will invite, okay, here we go, Justice Faver, Bishop Taylor, Aseem Martin, Freddie Loiza Salazar, and Jamal Butler. Sorry if I messed up anyone's name, feel free to correct it on the record. You may begin and just identify yourself for the record. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Oh, I got it. Which order do you want? I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter, however you want to start.
Good afternoon. My name is Justice Faver. Thank you, Chair and committee members, for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of thousands of construction workers in the affordable housing industry. I'm a proud Local 79 member and worked in construction, including non-union, for well over a decade. I was born and raised in public housing, and I am proof that a $40 wage and benefit package can transform your life and the lives of others around you like it did me and my family. Today is not about me, though. Today is about making sure our city has construction justice so that low-income New Yorkers, like the people I grew up with, have access to family-sustaining wages and affordable housing. Our communities are being harmed by some bad actors in the affordable housing industry who take government subsidies and pay construction workers poverty wages. Labors on these affordable housing projects are mainly black and brown. They are paid as little as $17 an hour by greedy, irresponsible contractors who are only making our housing crisis worse. In a typical year, a $17 an hour construction laborer's working person making less than $29,000 a year because we don't get regular hours. Earning 30% of the average median income means you can only afford $800 in rent. So these labors that build affordable housing can't afford to live in a city that they are building. That's unacceptable. So, a $40 an hour minimum package for construction workers who build affordable housing in our city is both morally and economically feasible. I'm tired of hearing anyone that says a just wage is impossible. We already doing it. Since 2021, Local 79 members have worked on 100% affordable city-finance projects that have created nearly 3,000 new apartments while paying a $40 an hour compensation package. We also have a pipeline of more than 6,000 affordable units. These projects prove that a standard for construction workers and more affordable housing go together, but we can't rely on the market alone to guarantee a fair wage for all construction workers on city-finance development. Recent affordable projects with this package for construction labors include Bronx Point in the South Bronx, Cinderella Verde in East Harlem, and 326 Rockaway Avenue in Brownsville. These projects are creating deeply affordable housing and family-sustaining careers for local construction workers, formerly incarcerated folks, women, and immigrants. That's why we need the Construction Justice Act. It will ensure that all construction workers who build city-subsidized affordable housing receive the same $40 an hour minimum compensation package. If we want the city to be of yes for affordable housing, we also have to be a city of yes for the workers who build it. Thank you. That's why I urge the city council to pass the Construction Justice Act. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bishop Taylor?
Yes. Bishop Taylor couldn't be here today, so I'm going to read his testimony. Esteemed members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Bishop Mitchell Taylor, co-founder and CEO of Urban Upbound, an organization focused on breaking cycles of poverty in public housing neighborhoods. I'm here to express our strong support for the Construction Justice Act, Intro 910. For too long, the people building affordable housing in low-income, black and brown communities haven't earned enough to live in their very developments. If passed, the Construction Justice Act proposed $40 per hour compensation package would change that. The bill sets a moral wage standard and ensure that these good jobs go to the communities that need them the most: low-income New Yorkers, NYCHA residents, and historically disadvantaged groups. In places like Queensbridge where I grew up, increased compensation can transform lives and construction careers, can empower residents to break cycles of poverty. It also provides a chance for formerly incarcerated individuals, immigrants, and others from disadvantaged backgrounds to access health insurance and provide for their families. When a city spends tax dollars on affordable housing, those dollars must come to our communities. The Construction Justice Act would ensure that happens. This legislation also incentivizes developers and contractors to invest in their workforce, creating a level playing field that improves productivity and efficiency while maintaining high standards. We can't afford to wait. By passing this bill, the council will strengthen the fight against the housing crisis with real solution, strong wages, and community hiring standards. Urban Upbound is proud to support the Construction Justice Act, and we urge the council to take action. Thank you.
Thank, why don't we go just down the line and then we'll come back around? So, yeah. The microphone right there? Thank you.
I got to press it? No, it's good.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your time. My name is Aseem Martin, and I'm from Harlem. I worked many years in dangerous conditions building affordable housing while struggling day-to-day with low wages. My low pay made me feel easily replaceable. I first worked for a demolition company that fired me because I complained about getting paid off the books. I've next worked for a masonry company on the books, but I was still so poorly paid that I had to use my Medicaid. When I injured my ankle on a night shift, I was told by my foreman that I wasn't getting workers comp, so I ended up using some of my sick days. This job paid a little better, so I went back to work limping. The most the masonry company paid me was $25 an hour, but they never gave me health insurance. It also was not steady work because in construction, you may not have work every day, and on masonry work, especially weather-dependent. I woke up every morning afraid that I'd get a text that I wouldn't be working that day and not getting paid. My worst fear is not being able to provide for my family. Construction is the deadliest industry in New York City. All of us are risking our lives every day. We deserve safe jobs that treat us fairly and pay at least $40 an hour. Since I began my apprenticeship, I've been able to take my family out of poverty, I have job security, and I don't fear missing a day's work. I'm proud of my family and friends that are now following in my footsteps. My son recently started his apprenticeship program with Local 79, and he did not have to experience exploitation like I had to. He was just on an affordable housing site in the Bronx, working for a masonry contractor that pays fair wages and health insurance. At the moment, I'm working with my tools to renovate a hospital, but I would love one day to work with my son on an affordable housing site with a job pay rate of at least $40 standard. Construction justice has already blessed my family. Our city needs to create more good jobs so those living in poverty have a chance to make a better life for themselves. We need construction justice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning.
Thank y'all. You know we love y'all, but we don't clap in the chamber, we do this.
All right.
All right.
Let's do it, let's do it.
The same thing.
All right. Good morning, City Council. My name is Jamal Butler, and I'm from Staten Island. I work, I worked for a concrete contractor on affordable housing in Harlem. When I was working there, I had to pay an arm and a leg for my health insurance. I was making $25 an hour, but at the end of the month, I still had to pay something like $500 out of my pocket to get my own health insurance. I still had high co-pays and out-of-pocket courses. I needed health coverage because I had one of the most dangerous jobs. I was grinding the concrete ceilings, all the dust was going straight into my face. I used to look like someone beat me with a bag of flour. Someone told me, "Watch out, silica could creep up on you." So I bought my own respirator and my own health insurance, but then I had no money left at the end of the month. Had nothing to fall back on if I ever lost that job. There was times I wouldn't get paid on time, or my checks would bounce. Sometimes I needed side hustles or a second job to make ends meet. My coworkers and I worked ourselves to the bone. We got so tired, created safety problems, and fallen objects almost took my life multiple times. When I became a residential labor with a $40 pay package, I could pay my rent, my family had health insurance, and I felt safer working on a job site that invests in its workers. Too many construction workers are getting exploited, especially on job sites receiving tax-paid money. These contractors should pay us enough to live decently and afford healthcare, not run us into the ground with no savings and leave us with no savings. No one can tell me we don't deserve to make $40 per hour. Construction workers can't work forever. We need retirement with dignity when our bodies break down from work. For this reason, we also need quality medical care, working in one of the most dangerous industries. Paying construction workers fairly and hiring from local communities will improve job safety and productivity. Let's build affordable housing better. Let's build affordable housing better and faster. I support the passage of the Construction Justice Intro 910.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have Freddie.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Freddie Loaisa. Vivo en Queens y soy miembro de la Unión Local 79. Antes yo pertenecía a una compañía de viviendas asequibles y yo trabajaba como obrero y ayudante de albañiles. Me pagaban $17 la hora sin beneficios médicos. El pago no era bastante para vivir una buena vida. Me alcanzaba solo para rentar un cuarto y no tenía ahorros. Lo voy a decir de nuevo. Trabajaba en proyectos financiados por la ciudad mientras rentaba un cuarto y saltaba comidas. Dejé de ir al doctor porque tenía miedo que iba a ser muy costoso. No sé qué hubiera hecho en una emergencia. Ahora, yo gano un paquete de compensación justo. Tengo seguro médico para mi familia, lo que nos ayuda mucho a mí y a mi esposa. Con mejores ingresos puedo rentar un apartamento y tener una vida más cómoda y tranquila. Puedo empezar a ahorrar. Todavía trabajo duro, pero sé que un día voy a poder retirarme porque mi paquete de pago incluye aportes de jubilación. Veo muchos trabajadores inmigrantes de mi comunidad que todavía enfrentan las mismas cosas. No pueden planear un futuro porque están enfocados en cómo van a comer cada día. Yo era uno de estos trabajadores. Tenemos que pagar un salario justo a los trabajadores de la construcción, un salario que apoya un nivel de vida digno. We need to pay a wage to construction workers that supports a good standard of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will translate for Freddie. My name is Freddie Loaisa Salazar. I live in Queens, and I am Local 79 Journey Worker. Previously, I worked for non-union affordable housing contractor for three years. I was working as a laborer and mason-tender. I was paid $17 per hour with no insurance. The pay when I worked non-union was not enough to build a good life. I could only afford to rent a room, and I had no savings. I'm going to say it again. I was working on a city-funded job while renting a room to sleep in and skipping meals. I put off going to the doctor because I was scared that I would get hit with the expensive medical bill. I don't know what I would have done in an emergency. Now I earn a just compensation package. Having healthcare for my family helped us get care. With better wages, I can afford to rent an apartment and life is more calm. I'm starting to save up. I still work hard, but I know one day I'll be able to retire because my pay includes a retirement contributions. I see a lot of construction workers in my community, many of them immigrants, still going through the struggles that I face. They can't plan for a future because they're just trying to figure out how to get enough food to eat each day. I used to be one of those workers. We need to pay a wage to construction workers that supports a good standard of life. Thank you.
Thank you all so much. I do have some questions for Justice. But first, I want to say that I appreciate you all coming out and telling your stories, sharing deeply personal experiences. It's appreciated. So, Justice, what are some of the essential benefits that factor into the $40 standard?
Thank you for your question. There are a plethora of benefits, though. Well, let's start with some of the most important ones. You have health insurance. That's factored in that. You have a pension. You have annuity. There are funds that are basically allocated to have protections that's in place so you can have a real livable wage. So what we're saying is that $25 of those dollars would be allocated to your wage. The 15 is allocated to the fringe benefits, which would be your retirement, your annuity, your pension, your vacation, and health insurance, some of the most vital things that keep you going.
One of the things that this bill also looks at is reducing recidivism, right? Something that is deeply personal for me. I know deeply personal for you in your testimony. How can good jobs reduce recidivism and improve public safety since we are a city that has prioritized safety in our city?
I mean, it's personal. When we think about, you know, a lot of this work is being already built, being built and disenfranchised under distressed communities, high-crime communities. And, you know, I grew up in a community that was crime-ridden, poverty-stricken. And most of the people I know that committed crime, they didn't commit crimes of passion. I didn't know, rather, I don't think I know anyone that, you know, committed some of the, you know, heinous crimes like rape or things like that. But I did know people that may have robbed and stole or sold drugs and pure out of survival. So when we talk about ending recidivism, construction is the first and most, one of the easiest entry points for a person that is formerly incarcerated to get in. For many reasons, they don't check a box. They just want to know if they could do this work. So when you provide someone with a livable wage, a career, folks aren't going back. The data shows that if someone has a career opportunity that they make in a livable wage, there's no reason to reoffend. A family-sustaining job is the best crime-prevention tool. Workers earn better wages are less likely to need secondary income to commit crime out of poverty.
Thank you so much for bringing that to light as well. I want to thank you all again for coming and for submitting testimony today. Thank you. Up next, our second panel will be made up of Una Adams, Rayvon White, Maurice Cunningham, Shawana Berry, and Jose Carlos Rojas. We might need one more chair. All right, perfect. We'll begin with Una.
And I thought I was loud enough. Good morning. My name is Una Adams, and I'm the Director of Organizing for Laborers Local 79. The Construction Justice Act is a necessary part of this City Council's actions to address the current housing crisis and end the exploitation of workers who build affordable housing. Currently, there are no standards for wages and benefits and community hiring attached to most forms of city financial assistance for affordable housing. The Construction Justice Act will help end this unjust reality for construction workers. Earlier this year, as was mentioned earlier in testimony, the city and HPD worked with Governor Hochul and the state legislature to pass a $40 minimum compensation package for all construction workers as part of its Affordable Neighborhoods, or 485X, program. It is time for the city to enact that same $40 minimum standard for the workers who build affordable housing that receive city subsidies. We reject a two-tiered system where construction workers earn $40 an hour on a state project that's affordable housing but are paid poverty wages on a city project that could be right next door. That is wrong, and it's unacceptable. $40 per hour must be the standard for all subsidized affordable housing projects. Claims by HPD that this wage standard would be cost prohibitive at any threshold are not in good faith. They ignore the fact that city-subsidized affordable projects have been built already using this $40-an-hour standard on both for-profit and not-for-profit jobs, and that other cities and states have instituted construction wage standards for affordable housing using some of the subsidy streams like Lytech, which were discussed earlier. These doomsday claims ignore multiple academic studies, which confirm that higher wages have been shown to increase productivity by retaining experienced workers and faster time to completion. And as was discussed earlier, market precedent clearly exists already for paying construction workers this $40-an-hour package. Indeed, this precedent has been created in recent years by responsible contractors, unions, and affordable housing developers. But it's time to move past project by project. Market-driven approaches will raise wages for some but leave many workers vulnerable to poverty wages, especially when low-road contractors, like Lincoln was speaking about, are building affordable housing. Let's be clear. The market will not guarantee that these construction workers earn the same $40 minimum wage and benefit package, but city government can and should guarantee it when tax dollars subsidize affordable projects. And that's why the City Council should pass the Construction Justice Act. We thank the City Council and the Chair and Speaker for their leadership in uplifting New York City communities.
Thank you so much.
My name is Maurice Cunningham. I lived in Brownsville Brooklyn all my life. Over the last eight years, I worked on affordable housing projects all over the city, getting a low wage with no benefits. It's not fair. Every day I woke up before sunrise with my body hurt. To work construction, you have to be mentally and physically tough. This is one of the most dangerous industries, and my body has paid the price. When I fell off a scaffold, I returned to work the next day. When I messed up my knee, I kept on working because I couldn't afford to miss a check. Now I'm 33 with a bad back and bad knees with nothing to show for it. When I got into the union, my first job was 100% affordable housing project. I worked for a masonry company that paid me a fair wage. For every hour I worked, I get healthcare, for me and my daughter, money towards my retirement. Construction is not just a job anymore. It's a career. My friends and family, former coworkers, are still underpaid. Creating a $40 an hour in Brownsville will benefit those who need it because the cost of living in the city is too high. It's not right for people in this industry to work in poverty. Good jobs will bring down crime in my community and encourage people to find a legitimate employment. I'm not going back, but the city needs to move forward with the fair wage of $40 an hour. My community needs construction justice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name is Shawana. I'm from East Harlem. I have three kids. I was a construction worker on non-union and affordable housing projects until 2022. I joined the Local 79 Apprentice Program in 2023, and now I'm a proud Local 79 apprentice. I struggled working on non-union affordable housing. The contractors paid me poverty wages and offered no insurance. On these projects, I did hard work like general conditions labor, cleaning the site, fire guard, and running the hoist. I had a lot of responsibilities, but I got paid only $18 an hour. Even though I was working full-time, I struggled to care for myself and my kids. I had to rely on government assistance like Medicaid. But even with that, there were a lot of out-of-pocket costs because I have a health condition that requires regular checkups and medication. I always had to cancel my doctor's appointments because I couldn't afford to miss work and because I couldn't afford the out-of-pocket costs. These were times that I needed to see a doctor, and I couldn't. This was difficult as a mother who was a provider for my household. I didn't even have time to help my kids with homework. When I worked on these affordable housing projects, I needed a better wage. I needed a just wage. I needed benefits, or at least to make enough to be able to afford my own healthcare and to start putting a little money away for emergencies. A $40 package would have made a huge difference. A $40 package would have given me a little breathing room to buy my kids' school supplies and save for their college expenses. My life got a lot better after I joined the union. Now I can stay afloat because I earn a family-sustaining wage. Every hour that I work goes towards medical and retirement contributions paid by my employer. Two of my kids are going to college, and I finally feel like I can support them. I want to build more affordable housing in my neighborhood, but me and other mothers just like me have to be able to live with dignity while we're building these projects. Our labor is not invisible. We deserve construction justice. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Buenas tardes. Me llamo Jose Carlos Rosas, y vivo en Queens. Trabajé durante cuatro años para un contratistas de viviendas que se beneficia de trabajos financiados por la ciudad. Me pagaban 15 la hora. Nunca tuve seguro médico de mi empleador. Hacía trabajos peligrosos de demolición, pero no me alcanzaba para sobrevivir. Era difícil cubrir las necesidades básicas para mi familia. Mi familia y yo vivíamos cinco personas en un solo cuarto: mi esposa, mis tres hijas, y yo. Porque era todo lo que podía permitirme. Era muy difícil si alguien se enfermaba. Utilizaba los hospitales públicos para mis hijas. Pero si yo me enfermaba, me quedaba en casa y esperaba lo mejor. Mucha gente de mi comunidad no califica para recursos del gobierno, y si califican, tiene miedo a utilizarlos. Algunos se niegan a ir al hospital, y esto acortó sus vidas. Nunca voy a olvidar los amigos y familiares perdidos en la pandemia. En ese tiempo, yo entendí que cobertura médica adecuada puede significar vida o muerte. En la compañía éramos mayoría inmigrantes, pero todos éramos explotados. Nos pagaban solo lo mínimo necesario. La compañía se lucraba con nuestro trabajo, pero nosotros no nos daba nada beneficiar a nuestras familias. Más de 100 trabajadores en esta compañía nos unimos como demolicionistas para permitir un paquete de pago justo, con seguro médico y jubilación. Experimentamos represalias a la compañía. Sacaron un compañero, y fue más de un año hasta que le ofrecieron regresar al trabajo. No nos rendimos. Estamos orgullosos de unirnos a miles de trabajadores de la construcción en esta ciudad, luchando por la justicia de obras y viviendas asequibles. Somos dignos de por lo menos 40 por hora. Gracias.
Gracias. Yes.
My name is Jose Carlos Rosas, and I live in Queens. I worked four years for an affordable housing contractor that benefited from city-subsidized work. I got paid $15 an hour, and I never had employer-paid health insurance. I was doing dangerous demolition work, but I could barely afford to survive. I struggled to provide for my family's basic necessities like groceries and clothing. My family and I live, five people, in one room: myself, my wife, and our three daughters, because that was all we could afford. This was especially difficult if one of us got sick. I use public hospital services for my daughters, but when I got sick, I'd just stay home and hope that for the best. Many in my community do not qualify for most government resources, and the ones that we do qualify for, they are scared to use. Some refuse to go to the hospital, and it cuts short their life. I'll never forget the friends and family lost during the coronavirus pandemic. It was then I realized that quality health insurance could mean life or death. Our company was mostly immigrants, but all workers in the company were exploited. We got paid just enough to keep coming back to work. The companies benefited from the work we did, but they never gave anything back to us to benefit our families. Over 100 of us in this company have come together as demolacionistas to fight for a fair wage package with healthcare and retirement security. We faced intimidation and retaliation. One of my coworkers was unlawfully fired, and it took over a year for him to be offered his job back. Despite the unfair labor practices, we have not given up. We are proud to join the thousands of construction workers in this city fighting for the justice on affordable housing projects. We are worth at least $40 an hour. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rayvon White, and I live in Bedford-Stuyvesant. I worked for an affordable housing general contractor for eight years. When I returned from prison, I started working in construction because I had prior experience. I was proud to work on affordable housing projects in my community, but I felt stuck. The most I ever made was $17.50 per hour. In order to make ends- At one point, I bought a car so I didn't have to take multiple buses, but I had to get, I had to give it up because I couldn't afford the cost. The job was sucking me dry. I was tired, worn out, and exhausted. I did everything asked of me, but when I was, when I asked for higher wages, I was ignored. And it wasn't just me. These are the type of jobs that people in my neighborhood have been offered. I saw a big NYC logo on a job every day I went to work for poverty wages. The city should be ashamed of support and exploitation. My family struggled with rising rent the whole time I was working on affordable housing projects. I also didn't have health insurance, and I made too much for Medicaid. I was on the edge about how long I would be out of work, and when the next job would start. I humbly ask those listening to consider if they could focus at work, if they had to constantly worry about how to get medical care and food for their kids. Now receive fair pay, and it feels like a huge burden has been lifted off my shoulders. I actually save money now, and I can plan to take my family on vacations. Our city needs to invest in the construction workers that build affordable housing. My community already has too many poverty wage jobs. We now have the opportunity to transform the lives of those from communities like mine's that need, need it the most. Please pass this bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I just have two questions for Una, and then we'll go on to the next panel. But given the significance of the wage standard to HPD's portfolio, have you met with them to discuss potential impacts?
Thanks so much for asking. Unfortunately, we did meet with HPD once, but then HPD has functionally ignored eight months of requests for substantive negotiations on the Construction Justice Act. Despite a nearly veto-proof support for this legislation in the city council, they are also withholding basic data which the city council themselves mandate be made public. The HPD Transparency Bill, Local Law Forty-Four, is currently nineteen months out of date, which prevents us from being able to do anything to verify the idea that it would cost five-hundred million dollars more. Who knows? Because the data isn't there. We have also filed Freedom of Information Act requests for the wage data which HPD is required to collect from all of the contractors on these jobs. Again, to state, that wage data already has to be submitted. I believe we filed our first FOIA for all of these projects four years ago, and to date, we have only received information on the prevailing wage jobs. So we have no way to verify how much workers in fact are currently being paid. HPD has the data but hasn't shared it with us. So we were forced to do our own analysis. We talked to some not-for-profit and for-profit affordable housing developers and did our own internal analysis and found that a forty-dollar-an-hour compensation standard would, would result in a marginal increase to construction costs of approximately two percent. And this has to do primarily with the stuff that we were talking, I was talking about earlier in terms of increased productivity. Under this scenario, an affordable housing project that is two-hundred thousand square feet would result in roughly a one-point-two-million-dollar increase in hard construction costs, money which, I just want to reiterate, would go directly to New York City construction workers through the local hire initiative to the communities which need it most.
Thank you for, for, for your answer, for your detailed answer. We did ask, as you saw, HPD about the wage data, and we plan, intend on following up. There are also members of HPD that are still here, and I, I want to also simultaneously thank them for staying. I think it's important for us to have and hear both sides of the conversation in this setting. My next question for you is, how would our neediest communities benefit from this legislation in your opinion?
Sure. So every dollar increase that goes into a low-wage worker's pocket has an exponential impact on local communities of color. A two thousand twenty-one study by Pinnacle Economics demonstrated that if reentry construction workers in our city, many of whom work in affordable housing, go from earning seventeen dollars an hour with no fringe benefits, which is what we see affordable housing laborers making on average, up to a forty-dollar-an-hour package, they would make collectively three-hundred million dollars more in wages and benefits. And according to the In Plan Economic Impact Model, this increased income would result in the reinvestment of nearly three-hundred million additionally in sales and ninety-nine million in income taxes into the communities where they live.
Great. Gail has a follow-up. Thank you.
No, I guess because of the data, lack of, you don't know. When people say they're affordable housing, that doesn't mean they're affordable housing. In my world, if you're affordable housing, you're nonprofit and you're a hundred percent affordable. So I think when a lot of people are talking, they're talking about people who say they're affordable housing, but not really. So, but you probably can't tell between, because you don't have the data, those that are really affordable, nonprofit, what they're paying versus those who say they're affordable. And is that correct that you?
No. So, not, not to be disagreeable, but the Local Law Forty-Four data that we have, looking backwards from nineteen months, does delineate who the, who the developers are, and we also keep our own data tracking all affordable housing in the city for both for-profit and not-for-profit. So we look up who the developer is and look at their status. The projects which Justice cited, which we have folks on, are a hundred percent affordable housing projects. They're not, not MIA, not 421A. So when we're talking here on these panels about affordable housing, we are talking about projects which are eighty percent to a hundred percent affordable. Some are done with not-for-profits, some not. What I'll tell you is that we are out with all of our organizing staff, talking to workers, and there is no differential in the wages. So there's a joint venture where we have an organizer on right now, and the laborers are making, you know, seventeen to twenty dollars an hour, and that's-
That's a nonprofit.
That's a non-for-profit.
And you have found some of the state projects that are a hundred percent affordable, nonprofit, that they are paying forty dollars?
No. So only when they have done, I'm sorry, you said-
The state as opposed to the city.
So the state 485X hasn't actually taken effect yet.
No, I know. I know. So you haven't seen anything that could be, that should be forty dollars as a nonprofit, a hundred percent affordable? That doesn't exist, is what you're saying.
So we have the projects which Justice mentioned earlier. I believe one of them is a JV. Is that correct? Justice with Riceboro, who is a nonprofit?
Yes.
Yeah. So one of the projects is, all three are a hundred percent affordable to my knowledge, and one of them is with a not-for-profit. And those are projects where we have union laborers on the job at our residential rate, which is actually like forty-one and change.
That's helpful to me. Riceboro's a good organization.
Yeah, and the other one was the Sandero Verde and Bronx Point, right?
Yep.
Yeah, in East Harlem and, and the, and the South Bronx. Thank you all for, again, sharing your stories and being part of this panel. It's very informative for us. Up next, panel number three, we have Alvaro, Alvaro Gonzalez Duran, Danny Cooley, Stephen And we can begin this panel with Alvaro. I'll be right back.
Okay. I'll go, right? Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Alvaro Gonzalez Duran. I'm a proud Local Seventy-Nine member and labor organizer. Before I joined an apprenticeship program, I worked on non-union construction for residential contractors who benefited from city subsidies. I made a near minimum wage without health insurance from my employer. One day, my appendix exploded, and I had to go to the hospital for emergency surgery. Because I didn't have health insurance, I ended up with almost thirty thousand dollars in hospital debt. I was already struggling financially, spending over half of my paycheck on housing and transportation. Many nights after work, I would sit in the car and cry because I didn't know how I would survive with such low wages. It wasn't until I received a forty-dollar-per-hour wage to build housing that I finally had some breathing room. I had healthcare, and I started saving up. After a year, my wife and I bought our first house together, and then I got married. I am proud of the life I have built, but there are too many people in my community who must accept that end jobs because there are no other options. Bosses take advantage of workers' parole or immigration status, keeping them trapped in poverty wage jobs. These jobs are often called low-skill, not because of the skill needed, but because of what, who does the work. It's unjust that some construction workers earn triple or quadruple what other construction workers are paying. A forty-dollar-per-hour minimum wage and benefit compensation package would ensure that the lowest-paid construction workers who build city-subsidized affordable housing are lifted out of poverty and can become part of the middle class. We also can't forget the importance of essential benefits for workers like me. New York construction workers are earned insured at three times the rate of other workers, yet we perform some of the most dangerous jobs. Our bodies break down physically. Most of us can't work until we're sixty years old. We need retirement with dignity when workers don't have healthcare or retirement contributions from their company. They are likely to rely more on taxpayer-funded resources and programs from government. Over the past decade, the city council has passed legislation to raise wages for fast-food workers, retail workers, taxi drivers, and app-based delivery workers. In two thousand nineteen, the city council set a new wage standard, which is now above forty dollars an hour, for building service workers on city-financed affordable housing projects. It is time to do the same for construction workers. We need and deserve a minimum compensation package of forty dollars per hour. That's why I urge you to pass Construction Justice. Thank you.
My name is Danny Cooley, and I live in the Bronx. My story is proof that creating good jobs and affordable housing construction is possible and necessary. After joining the union, I worked on a hundred percent affordable housing projects in Brooklyn with Local Seventy-Nine, where we got paid a just compensation package of about forty dollars an hour. Before joining the union, I was paid minimum wage on a residential job by a subcontractor that took advantage of my incarceration history. It felt like a dead end or a path back to prison. But my future brightened after I got the job at forty an hour. My pay jumped from minimum wage with no benefits to a good-livable wage that includes healthcare and retirement benefits. This job gave me something I never had before: stability, the security of a paycheck I can actually live on. Now I have a career, and I can make the most of my second chance, and I am proud to have helped build hundreds of new affordable apartments of New York City residents. Workers like me are ready to build the housing that New York City needs in the communities we come from. Responsible developers are showing that you can pay workers just wage without sacrificing affordability. Let's get to work. We need construction justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Stephen Pelisi. I'm New York City-born and live and raised in Far Rockaway. I previously worked for a subcontractor on multiple affordable housing projects in Brooklyn, Queens, and the Bronx. I specialize in core drilling and cutting concrete. I knew that I was, wasn't going to get anywhere working that job. I topped out making twenty-two dollars an hour with no benefits. That meant on a good month, I had enough for food and not get evicted. But God helped me if I needed a doctor or a new pair of boots. Every day was a test of survival. A supervisor once told me to cut into a concrete wall while standing in an excavation pit on an unsecured wooden plank. I said, "That's unsafe." I was told, "Go home and lose the day's pay or get the job done." I did my best to protect myself safely because I need to work to provide for my family. A just wage standard on affordable housing jobs would change the lives of people like me. I faced a huge amount of disrespect, and I believe that's partly due because of the company knowing my incarceration history. But regardless of my history, I am worthy of a just wage for a hard day's pay, for hard day's work, I'm sorry. We need to stop predatory contractors from being parasites in our communities. A forty-dollar wage standard would reflect the value of our work instead of being treated like garbage. My life changed when I got the job that paid a fair wage. The last few years have opened up doors for my family and changed our way of life. I don't worry anymore about taking my kids out on the weekends and what that would mean with paying the rent that month. Communities like mine need good-paying jobs and affordable housing more than ever. I urge you to pass the bill. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have some questions for this panel. So, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry.
Good afternoon. My name is Gilfredo Valentin. I remember when I first started in construction, I thought fifteen dollars an hour was enough to feed myself and my family. I had just been released from prison, so it felt like a lot of money for me at the time. I soon came to realize that it wasn't enough. I was living check to check, barely making enough to survive. Sometimes I was going without lunch because I didn't have enough to cover my meals for the week. I felt like I was being forced to choose between paying the rent or buying groceries. It was very disheartening. It was so much pressure that I lost my ability to laugh. Later on, I learned that most of the job sites I was working on then were new affordable housing projects that received city funding. All day, I worked for a roofing contractor and sweated over a hot kettle, mixing tar and spreading asphalt. I did the most for pennies on the dollar, and I never received health insurance from that company. Now that I make at least forty dollars an hour now, I no longer worry about putting food on the table. Doesn't feel like I'm drowning anymore. I can finally breathe and enjoy time with my family. For far too long, construction workers like myself have been paid poverty wages on taxpayer-funded projects. The city council could change this reality. It is time to do the right thing. Affordable housing should be built with fair wages. We cannot forget the importance of healthcare and retirement savings. I know my worth, and it's at least a forty-dollar package. I ask you to please support the Construction Justice Act. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your meaningful testimony. At this point, you're preaching to the choir, but it's important to still hear your stories because we need to continue to garner support and to have a complete picture of, of the workers' lives that we're talking about, the hanging the balance here. I have, I do have two questions for Alvaro. And this is something we've heard throughout the day, right, about workers needing to apply for Medicaid, to apply for food stamps, to actually live, live in this city. How many construction workers are using safety net programs, in your experience, to try and get by?
The UC Berkeley Labor Center found that forty-one percent of construction workers' families are actually signed up for one or more essential safety nets programs, which comes at a tune of two billion dollars a year, which basically means we're subsidizing contractors who refuse to pay wages to essential workers in the most dangerous sector of and industry.
Okay. Thank you. That's a sad reality that shouldn't be the case in one of the, you know, richest cities in the world. Thank you for being an organizer on affordable housing sites. I've seen you in Inwood. I rolled down my window and said, "Hey." And you're on these sites. You've been talking to workers on these affordable housing projects. What have you heard from your counterparts?
Yeah. So what we, we're going around all over throughout New York City, and the one thing we're hearing is, you know, workers are making anywhere from sixteen to twenty-five dollars an hour, which in my opinion is, you can't live anywhere with that wage. Oftentimes, what we hear is that workers, you know, they're not getting the, the medical coverage attached to this. And also, you know, they're oftentimes afraid to leave these jobs because they can't afford to miss a day. They can't afford, you know, because like I said, they're not making great wages, so they're not saving up. And a lot of times-
And a lot of times, we've heard that some construction workers' parole status or immigration status is held over their head, which does, you know, when they want to talk about -- when they want to speak out about their wages or work conditions, this is hang over their head so they could be silenced, which does keep them in jobs that are dangerous and have no pathway to future for them.
Great. Thank you so much for answering our questions and for, again, sharing your stories. They're meaningful, and we're appreciative. Thank you. Up next, we have our fourth panel. We have Hannah Shimowitz, Jocelyn Amata, Jaycee Heaton, and Chris Kohler. And I hope if I messed up your name, you can correct it in the record. Shall we begin with Jocelyn? Go this way. Great. That's okay.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. My name is Jocelyn Amata, and I am the Executive Director of La Colmena, an immigrant rights organization based on Staten Island. At La Colmena, we work to empower immigrant workers through education, culture, organizing, and economic development. Through this work, we witness firsthand how immigrant workers are often vulnerable to discrimination, wage theft, and abuse. Today, we are here to support the Construction Justice Act, a critical step in shining a light on the risk that construction workers take in building affordable housing or in city projects. It is vital that these workers receive fair pay and recognition for their contributions, a principle we emphasize regularly in our meetings at La Colmena with our members by reinforcing the inherent value of their work. Immigrant workers are often overlooked in these city projects, with many brought on as independent contractors through their EIN numbers. They are a fundamental part in building New York City through city projects such as affordable housing. This moment is about affirming that all workers, regardless of immigration status, deserve fair wages and protections. Today, as immigrant rights organizations and labor advocates unite, we send a powerful message: No worker should be left behind. I thank you for your time and support in standing with us for justice and equity.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairperson and members of council. My name is Josie Headen. I'm the Executive Director of Pathways to Apprenticeship, an organization that helps underserved and underprivileged individuals have access to union career opportunities through pre-apprenticeship. I'm going to read a testimony from one of our partner organizations, Center for Employment Opportunities. Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this legislation. To start, I want to paint a picture for you regarding what it is like for someone coming home from prison. Thousands of people leave prison and jail every year and return to the city. Maybe some were fortunate enough to have been part of a vocational program. Most don't have access to those while they're incarcerated. Regardless, you're going to leave DOCCS with $200 and a bus ticket and have to figure things out from there. Immediately -- excuse me. Immediately, you need to figure out ID and any other documents. You need to obtain employment before you can even start looking for a job. You work hard to get connected to services that can support you, and hopefully, this happens within the first few weeks. But sometimes, it takes months. One of your biggest concerns is how you're going to make a living just to survive in the few first weeks. You need income, and you need to find opportunities that will provide that. To top it all off, you are often dealing with parole restrictions and requirement that make it hard for you to have enough time to figure this out. Meeting these basic needs is one of these things that CEO focuses on. First and foremost, we connect people returning from incarceration to immediate transitional employment and paid training opportunities that allow people to get some immediate income that helps them to stabilize before they start looking for permanent employment. We prepare thousands of people every year for a career in construction. For careers in construction work is one of the opportunities that offers the most promise to people. But the biggest barrier to people entering the industry is the lack of quality jobs available to them. We know how critical construction jobs are for justice-impacted people. CEO has been partnering with laborers' union to get people into apprenticeships, and we see how life changes for these jobs. But there aren't enough jobs. We need to see more construction jobs in the city. With the forty-dollar floor for wages and benefits, and this bill will ensure that happens. We need to see justice-impacted people directly benefit from these jobs, and there needs to be explicit language in this bill that makes sure that that happens. Signed, Ken Edwards, Manager of Leadership and Organizing, Center for Employment Opportunities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Della Rosa and committee members, for the opportunity to testify. My name's Hannah Shimowitz, and I'm a senior researcher and policy analyst for the National Employment Law Project, or NLP, a New York-based national nonprofit that's been fighting for workers' rights for fifty-five years. NLP is a leading authority on fair chance hiring, working closely with advocates and policymakers to reduce barriers to employment for people with arrest or conviction records. We strongly support the Construction Justice Act. Construction is one of few industries where people with records can find work. Around one in four recently incarcerated people who find employment work in construction. This bill will ensure that residents of NYCHA developments and neighborhoods with higher poverty rates will have access to construction jobs with good wages and essential benefits. Due to a public housing-to-prison pipeline that fuels racialized economic inequality in the city, incarceration rates and census tracts with NYCHA developments are 4.6 times higher than in non-NYCHA neighborhoods, despite similar crime rates. As these residents are disproportionately impacted by the criminal legal system, this bill provides an opportunity to help break the cycle of criminalization and financial instability. People with records face major obstacles to securing good jobs. Conditions of probation and parole can also drive desperation and create intense pressure for workers to accept any job they can find, no matter how unsafe or underpaid. This bill will help ensure that city-assisted housing is not built using the coerced labor of exploited workers. This bill provides a pathway to good construction jobs for workers and communities that have been both historically marginalized in the labor market and targeted by the criminal legal system. For these reasons, NLP strongly urges the council to pass the Construction Justice Act. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Kohler. I'm the Assistant Director of the Mason Tenders PAC, and I'm going to be reading the testimony of David Bolger. My name is David Bolger. I'm the Business Manager of the Mason Tenders District Council, a council of labor unions representing construction laborers throughout New York City. I'm here to testify in support of the Construction Justice Act, also known as the CJA. I want to start by thanking New York City Council member Carmen Della Rosa for introducing the CJA and championing this legislation among her colleagues in the New York City Council. At the Mason Tenders District Council, we believe in raising wages and improving job quality for all construction workers, not just our members. The CJA is long overdue. It will create a much-needed forty-dollar-per-hour wage and benefit package that strengthens and empowers New York's affordable housing construction workforce as a whole. Too many workers building affordable housing in our city today barely even earn above fifteen dollars per hour and often receive no benefits, as we've heard earlier. That's wrong and must change. The CJA will transform the lives of thousands of construction workers who were paid poverty wages and exploited, especially those who are formerly incarcerated individuals, immigrants, and day laborers. Indeed, this legislation will enable construction workers who are part of the working poor to become part of the middle class. Across the five boroughs, New Yorkers who build affordable housing perform dangerous jobs under brutal conditions and often end up with long-term health problems. All of these workers should earn a wage and benefit package of at least forty dollars per hour for their vital work, and they should be able to live in the neighborhoods where they build affordable housing. Earlier this year, we were proud to play a lead role in negotiating affordable neighborhoods for New Yorkers, also called 485X, a New York State affordable housing tax abatement that includes a forty-dollar-per-hour minimum wage package for all construction workers. City government should take the same action now and enact the CJA to create a forty-dollar-per-hour minimum wage package for all construction workers who build city subsidized affordable housing. Between the city and the state, there should be consistency on the forty-dollar minimum wage package for affordable housing construction workers. All construction workers building affordable housing in New York City, whether the housing is subsidized by the city or the state, should be earning this forty-dollar-per-wage minimum wage package. The CJA will help make that a reality and complement recent state action that created a forty-dollar-per-hour minimum wage package for 485X. It's time to end the unjust status quo in affordable housing construction. It's time for the City Council to pass the Construction Justice Act. Thank you.
Thank you all so much for your testimony. I want to say that individually, I respect each and every one of you, the work you do, the organizations you represent, and for bringing forward the struggles of your clients, of the people that you're servicing every single day. I just want to confirm, I'm going to butcher the name, but Gezzy?
Josie.
Josie. What's your last name?
Headen.
Headen, okay. Good, okay, we got it. Thank you. We just wanted to make sure, because I was so bad at that. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you for coming. So, our last in-person panel is made up of Ismani Speliotis, Barica Williams, Zachary Steinberg, William Scarborough, Christopher Leon Johnson. I want everyone to be on the panel. Just give us a second.
I may be mistaken, but I don't think Ismani is in the room.
Ismani Speliotis.
She's on her way.
Okay. Yeah, there's something with the trains. And then we have Barica, and Zachary, and William is not here. William Scarborough? Huh? No, that's Christopher.
Yeah, can I go?
Hold on one second. We're just making sure everybody's here. Okay, so, let's begin. Go ahead.
Hello. Good afternoon, Chair Della Rosa. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I used to be a member of 32BJ, worked on the east side access as a shop stewardess, a construction site, a public project, I think everybody knows as the Grand Central Station, Long Island Railroad. So, I'm here to show my support for Intro 910, the Construction Justice Act. This is really needed because, like I said, I used to work with security on a construction site, and I see what these guys go through via Local 731. I think they're a sister union to Local 79. If anybody can correct me on that, they're a sister union of Local 79. They do the railroads. But I see what they go through. I see the stuff they had to deal with, and they get paid like twenty-five dollars an hour, which isn't even 2018, 2019, 2017 numbers and 2020 numbers. That's not a living wage. A living wage is like thirty-three dollars an hour in New York City. You have to pay these guys forty bucks an hour. I think they should, but we don't know what the issue is, is that these general contractors, they don't want to pay, they don't want to pay more than what they got to pay for. So, they should fight for it. Forty dollars is needed in this city because the cost of living is getting higher, and especially if these guys are working on affordable housing projects. And we all know the majority of these projects are really affordable, just the name of it, it's affordable. And relating to the other guy, what they got to say about justice-fulled individuals, yeah, you do need them, but there's already bills that already benefit justice-involved individuals, like the Second Chance Act. And Second Chance, and it's another bill, like Clean Slate, that's already benefited justice-involved individuals that really expunge records if you have a felony record. So, I don't know why they're complaining, like, these people complain about justice-involved individuals. That's the thing. So, these guys need it. These guys deserve this bill to be passed in the City Council, and hopefully, the mayor signs it, have a ceremony to sign this bill, because these guys need it. If he really cares about the labor, this bill's going to go through with a supermajority, but this mayor, Eric Abbs, needs to sign it, not just let it just pass without being signed. So, I got to go. I know I'm bouncing out of here. I got to go to the -- but you can ask me questions if you can, but I'm going to.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Barica?
Hi, Chair Della Rosa. My name is Barica Williams. I'm the Executive Director of the Association for Neighborhood and Housing Development, or ANHD, and we represent more than eighty-plus housing nonprofit tenants organizing groups across the city. So, ANHD agrees with the spirit and intent of Intro 910, particularly in valuing workers' rights and ensuring fair wages. It's very important to us. Our members, many of our members are proud supporters of things like the Just Pay campaign around ensuring increases for human services. But we believe the bill as it stands in its current form would hinder our overall production and preservation of affordable housing in New York City. Our key concerns are the potential reduction in affordable housing units, the adverse effect on nonprofit developers, the adverse effect on MWBE firms and subs, and the enforcement requirements that resemble prevailing wage standards. I want to be really specific that we oppose because our concerns are about affording this without significant capital funding for HPD by this and future city councils, from which this bill makes no commitment at this time. There is no money attached to this bill, and so, in its current form, it would be unworkable for our affordable housing context. To clarify for Councilmember Brewer's previous questions, this bill applies to all projects with HPD subsidies, so it's not limited to those 485X or MIH units with only twenty percent affordable. So, that would include a hundred percent nonprofit projects. That would include supportive projects. That would include a hundred percent DV projects. That would include a hundred percent project-based voucher projects and affordable homeownership. These are all things that we heard council members bring up at last week's hearing on City of Yes. We heard increase in affordable units, increase in deeper affordability, more affordable homeownership. And I just, for us as ANHD, we want to make sure that the council is very clear that as it stands right now, without money, our members and the affordable housing sector would not be able to hold consistent to the current production numbers, let alone be able to meet those significant increase in costs. And I just want to name that while previous testimony was citing a two percent cost increase on the projects, that is fundamentally not correct and not how this is financed. That looks like a project-by-project basis. And in reality, what would happen is each project would cost more, certain projects would go ahead, and certain projects in some of your districts would never happen. That is the way Lytech is financed, not the way we finance an individual project, and we have to look at both the systems and the individual project costs. And so, that's a big challenge for us. I'll stop now because I know I'm out of time.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you, Councilmember. REBNI has expressed its support for local legislation that would establish an elevated minimum wage standard and local hiring requirements for city-supported construction projects. Based on this belief, REBNI was proud to reach an agreement with the Mason Tenders District Council to establish an elevated minimum compensation standard for projects benefiting from what eventually became the 485X program. While it was not what was ultimately enacted into law, under the REBNI-Mason-Tenders agreement, all workers on projects would be guaranteed a wage and benefit package that began at thirty-five dollars an hour, eventually rising to forty-three dollars an hour by 2033. Notably, this agreement applied to private contract mixed-income residential development, not city-supported affordable housing that often operates on much tighter margins. The REBNI-Mason-Tenders agreement recognized that any wage standard must be calibrated so as not to inhibit the ability of a project to move forward. If a project becomes financially infeasible due to higher regulatory burdens and costs, those same workers will not have jobs, and the city will lose out on the affordable housing it urgently needs. The forty-dollar-per-hour standard in this legislation will raise project costs. It will inhibit development of projects that operate with very tight margins, and it will reduce the overall amount of affordable housing the city can support and limit the ability of the city to create more deeply affordable housing. In addition, the proposed compliance regime will pose significant challenges for many developers and contractors, particularly smaller firms and MWBEs. Many contractors on these projects are not familiar or equipped to comply with the prevailing wage style, record-keeping, noticing, and enforcement requirements included in the proposal. Given that the legislation imposes a minimum wage rather than a prevailing wage, it would be reasonable to find ways to reduce the significant compliance obligations in the bill. In addition, the bill could be improved through other changes that are detailed in our written testimony. With the city already facing a severe housing shortage and the mayor's moonshot goal of five hundred thousand new units, balancing the goals of this legislation with the need for more housing and more housing capital funding is critical. REBNI looks forward to continuing to work with the council, the mayoral administration, and all stakeholders on this important topic. Thank you.
I want to thank you both for your testimony. Your points are well-taken, and, you know, these hearings are meant to be a beginning of this conversation, right? We're having this conversation because it's an important one to have. I welcome continued dialogue, and I know our office is working on setting up something specifically with you all to have the conversation, but I appreciate the feedback you've given us and any other suggestions or insight that you have. Please submit to the committee so that we can review. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Ismani's testimony she wanted to know.
You can read it on the record on her behalf, yes.
I can hop.
Okay.
I will hop.
She's going to read Ismani.
I'll just record on.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. My name is Ismani Speliotis, and I'm the Executive Director of Mutual Housing of New York, Manny. Manny. Manny is a not-for-profit owner, affordable housing developer, project manager, marketing agent, HUD-certified loan counselor, and administrative services entity. For decades, we've been working to increase affordable housing opportunities by identifying and implementing creative housing development initiatives with a focus on preservation and real deep affordability. I am submitting this testimony to the City Council in favor of Intro 910, Chapter 36, Community Hiring and Compensation Standards on City-Assisted Housing Development Projects. It is time to replace dangerous low-wage jobs with safe, living-wage-paying jobs with benefits. As a city, we have an obligation to protect all workers who build homes in neighborhoods across the city. Living-wage construction jobs for every construction trade by every employer must be the norm. Real affordability in housing can go hand-in-hand with well-paid, documented construction and paid benefits. I am suggesting some changes, which I believe will make the legislation easier to implement for all parties involved. Before outlining my reasons for support, I want to address one major issue that city agencies and developers have brought up as a non-starter for this legislation. The opposition's position is that there will be a dramatic increase in construction costs, upwards of 30%, which will reduce the amount of affordable housing the city can build each year and will delay housing developments because of reduced resources. Construction costs have increased substantially over the last few years, and there are several reasons for this increase, independent of labor costs. During and post-pandemic scarcity of resources has been a major reason contractors blame for the increased costs. Yikes. However, there is one major factor that has increased construction costs: insurance. Insurance premiums have increased astronomically over the past few years for reasons that can be addressed by adopting Intro 910, providing a living wage and ensuring that affordable health benefits are available to all workers. The industry has experienced an increased number of accidents on construction sites. Even if contractors have not been personally affected and hit with liability lawsuits, premiums have increased for all. By hiring and training construction workers and paying a living wage and by providing bona fide health coverage, contractors, owners, and developers will experience increased productivity, fewer work stoppages, and the industry will be able to demand lower insurance premiums. And it goes on.
You can just submit it for the record, and we'll take a look at it. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
So thank all of you who came here to share your thoughts and experiences today. If there is anyone in the chamber who wishes to speak but has not yet had the opportunity to do so, please raise your hand and fill out the appearance card with the sergeant-at-arms at the back of the room. Seeing no hands in the chamber, we will now shift to Zoom testimony. When your name is called, please wait until a member of our team unmutes you, and the sergeant-at-arms will indicate that you may begin. We will start with Robert Altman, to be followed by Cesar Tobar. You may begin.
Am I unmuted?
Robert, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, please, thank you. I'm not going to read my testimony because it's redundant. You have it there in front of you, and you can look at it. Couple of things, I don't know if you have the latest version of the testimony, but one of our members who does union and non-union jobs actually ran the numbers of what this would cost. And he said that this would cost $40,000 per unit. That sort of seems to be a bit in line with what HPD is talking about. If you run the numbers, that's a substantial figure for the city of New York. Second thing on 485X, there's a lot of misdescriptions on what was going on with 485X. The wage requirements, for example, only in certain areas of certain size of buildings. It's not in every building. A lot of your affordable housing projects are under 100 units, especially in the outer borough areas of the city. So when you get down to it, 485X, if it was a 485X project in that area, which I understand this doesn't apply to that, but if it was a similar-type building, the wage requirements of 485X would not apply. So I thought that that was something that needed to be brought out. And finally, when we talked about this meeting at our board meeting the other month, one of the first things that got asked from a minority contractor was, "Did anybody talk to the minority contractors before this bill was written?" And I don't have an answer for them. So I don't know. But that was his concern, because he felt this bill would not be written the way it was if people had gotten a substantial minority contractor.
Thank you, your time expired. Thank you, Mr. Altman. The short answer to that question is they're free to reach out to our office. We have an open-door policy. I'm happy to speak to any contractors, anyone else who will be impacted by this legislation. You can find our contact information online. I'm happy to meet with them. Up next, we have Cesar Tobar. You may begin.
Hello, my name is Cesar, and I'm here testifying on behalf of the Bronx-wide Coalition, made up of community faith and labor groups that have been working together over the last five years to create a long-term economic development plan for the Bronx, grounded in racial justice and economic democracy. We support the Bronx or the Construction Justice Act because it's an important step towards building an economy that allows workers to access dignified, family-sustaining jobs as they critically need affordable housing for our community members. Construction sector is an important driver of our economy, and much of our current subsidized housing being built in the Bronx is unaffordable to the residents living in those neighborhoods where the developments are happening. On top of that, often pays low wages to the construction workers that make these projects a reality. The Construction Justice Act is important as it will set clear standards in the industry and ensure workers get a wage and benefit standard above $40 an hour, investing in families sustaining jobs important to transforming the lives of Bronx workers. I strongly urge the council to pass the Construction Justice Act. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have Karina Cuffman-Gutierrez. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman. My name is Karina Cuffman-Gutierrez, and I'm the Deputy Director at the Street Vendor Project. We're a membership-based organization of over 3,000 street vendor members. And thank you for the opportunity to testify today. So street vendors and construction workers have long had a partnership. Outside of almost every construction site, street vendors are there to ensure that workers have access to an affordable, healthy meal. And it's thanks to union organizing that workers even have access to that break to enjoy their vendor meal in the first place. We are proud to support the Construction Justice Act as part of the Construction Justice NYC Coalition, a grassroots coalition of labor unions, community-based organizations, and worker advocates that are committed to ending the exploitation and unjust treatment of New Yorkers employed in the construction industry. SVP's members continue to hear from our community about the routine exploitation of construction workers by bad actors in the affordable housing industry, which is why we are adding our voices to the demand that our tax dollars be used to uplift workers and not to further their struggles. Construction workers who build affordable housing are our family members, our neighbors, and our customers, and we see firsthand the exploitation that they face. We know that low wages are one of the biggest contributors to the housing crisis. Construction Justice Act ensures that every dollar of city subsidy returns to our neighborhoods through local hires and good wages that can build generational wealth for working families. It raises worker wages by setting a just wage on subsidized housing. And it's exactly the type of legislation that working New Yorkers need right now to fight systemic poverty. Commend the committee for bringing forward this bill, and we urge the swift passage of the Construction Justice Act. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much, Karina. Up next is Juan Nunez. You may begin.
Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Juan Nunez. I am an organizer with the Norfolk Bronx Community Charity Coalition, and I'm testifying today on behalf, in support of the Construction Justice Act. The Norfolk Bronx, we're a 50-year-old, member-led organization that is focused on advancing racial justice and economic democracy. We support the act because we need equitable development in the Bronx and beyond. This means that affordable housing being built in the Bronx should be accessible to existing residents and should create high-rise jobs with living wage and benefits. Our public dollars subsidizing these projects should support the workers to access jobs with dignity and take care of the families. The Construction Justice Act will attach a wage and benefit standard of $40 per hour. These standards will mitigate the routine exploitation of workers, including those who are formerly incarcerated and have the potential to transform the lives of Bronx workers. I strongly urge City Council to pass the Construction Justice Act. There's so many affordable housing units going on in our neighborhoods that none of our people could afford, none of us could apply to. And providing folks with a living wage would allow for them to not just work, but actually afford to live in the borough that we're helping build. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Up next, we have Boba Kar-Saul. You may begin. All right. We are making a final call for Zoom registrants who have not yet spoken.